I'd like to call the meeting to order. And I'd like to welcome everybody, the public and board members. I want to also just let you know that I have taken over the role of Chair of the School Board and will remain in this role until the Board's reorganization meeting in April. At that time, the Board elects a new Chair. This move occurs in response to Commissioner Porter's letter to the Board delegating Chair Authority to the Vice Chair as per our Board policy. And I want to take this opportunity to say to the larger community, as well as the district and my fellow Board members, to affirm our core principles to which we, as a Board, are committed. And these include a belief in the importance of civility, fairness, integrity, and self-reflection about our own biases. We are a learning community that has adopted restorative practices. We benefit from reflection about our experience as a basis for growing and improving the ways that we do our job as Commissioners. I look forward to serving the community and the district in this role for the duration of my term. So, thank you for that. And at this point, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Stephanie. I want to pull something.
Yep. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Porter, second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I want to...
Go ahead. If it's a consent agenda, we'll wait.
Oh, it is on the consent agenda.
Okay, so that will come later.
Okay.
Okay. Want to just add a note here that we are... You may notice that the Board is going to be doing business slightly differently in the sense that we are going to adhere a little bit more strictly to Robert's Rules, in which case, which means that there will be a motion introduced before a discussion on any topic. So with that, could I have votes? All those in favor of adopting the agenda as written?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Let me consult for a moment.
What's this? Oh, well, now we have time to amend the agenda because we just passed the agenda.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda. Sorry. New at this. Can I... I'd like to... The motion would be to move the student presentation of the Black Lives Matter flag up to Item 4 on the agenda and to move all of the remaining items down. Is there a second?
Sure.
All those in...
Second.
Second? Commissioner Kleeman seconds it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It passes unanimously. So, we now have an agenda. And we're going to start with public comment. I'm going to turn to Commissioner Curry to identify the list.
So, I have like four names signed up here, and then I just sent the list back to be available if anybody else would like to sign up. So Fran?
Turn left.
Okay.
Are you going to start this?
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, I'm Fran Brock, President of the Burlington Education Association and a history teacher at Burlington High School. First, let me remind the Board that our paraeducators have been working without a contract for months. I urge the Board to move this process along. It has been more than two months since we last talked, and it is time to set a date for fact-finding. Both you and the BEA have agreed to a fact-finder. Let's move as quickly as possible to fact-finding so we can reach an agreement on a contract that is fair to us, good for our community, and most importantly, allows us to attract and retain the best for Burlington students. Let me introduce Mark Van Buren, Linda Segal, and Emily Stewart, who most eloquently than I can address the status of the paraeducator contract and are deep concerned that the district has not taken seriously the time needed for elementary school teachers to hold meaningful meetings with families regarding their children's progress. We talk about wanting to close the achievement gap, but the only way we can succeed at this is if families engage with us. By not budgeting adequate time for the March conferences, the district is hurting the education of the children. Lastly, on behalf of Burlington teachers, let me express our pride in the students who are here tonight and will speak to you this evening. They demonstrate the strengths and success of Burlington schools. The Board community can be proud of these students and their impressive display of civic engagement.
Mark Van Buren, then Linda Segal.
Thanks Fran. Again, my name is Mark Van Buren, and I'm a paraeducator here at Hunt Middle School. And the first thing I'd like to do is thank the superintendent and the School Board. There was a lot of hard work that went into the school budget. It was, you know, this is a very diverse school district. There's a lot of differing ideas that we had to balance between the budget and like ideas of how to move forward with education and how to help our students. And so, I know there's a lot of work, and so I'd like to thank all of y'all for that. I get to follow those, very interesting. As a paraeducator, I am very concerned about the... Our budget negoti... Our contract negotiations. I heard Commissioner Curry speaking about having respect for the collective bargaining process. And then, we had mediation on December 7th. And it is now February 13th, and we still don't have... I think we finally did just agree on a... On the fact-finder. But, that's been two months, and it's time to get going on this process. The other thing I would like to say, we have information sessions. We didn't even find out how the cost-sharing was going to happen on our health insurance until January 9th. And we've had people... And we don't have any information sessions happening until the first one tomorrow, and then two more over our break. And we have... Paraeducators don't make a lot of money, and we have people going in to the pharmacy and having like thousand-dollar bills that, you know, do. And we don't have any way to pay for that. Eventually, we will be reimbursed, but at this time, they really... We don't have any way that this happened, and it's just... It's really bad. There's... We have people that are suffering, you know, daily. That's all I have to say today. Thanks.
My name is Linda Segal, and I'm a Burlington School District teacher of English learners. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my students, their parents, and all the elementary teachers in the district. Teachers in Burlington School District greatly value the relationships that we build with parents. While we strive to nurture these partnerships throughout the year, parent conferences are particularly important in making sure that parents are informed about their child's progress and growth. Equally important, conferences are our time to listen and learn about our students' family life and any concerns that parents may have. Parent conferences occur only twice a year and last for only 25 minutes. Teachers work hard to utilize every minute of these short meetings to make sure that all necessary information is shared. When an interpreter is required, the time becomes even more valuable. The decision by the district to reduce the conference time to a half-day, making these days into student days instead of restoring a day lost to the strike contradicts our values. The current plan to host a celebration of learning from 12:15 to 2:30 in every elementary classroom on March 23rd makes it impossible for our multilingual liaisons to meet the need of any EL family across the district. By having a group celebration only during afternoon hours, we seriously restrict the flexibility we have to meet the needs of parents who work during this time or who have jobs where taking time off in the middle of the day means a loss in income. We lose time to discuss individual needs and interventions such as summer school and things that parents can do to support their families. We can do better than this for our low-income and EL families, and we need to do better than this. We cannot do this without the support of our School Board and administration. The decision to cut parent conference time by eight hours undermines our goal of building an equitable and inclusive community and jeopardizes our ability to meet the needs of our most vulnerable families.
And Emily Stewart's the last person signed up, but if anyone came in and wants to speak, there's a sign-up sheet here that could probably be passed back that way so that people could get to it.
Hi. My name is Emily Stewart, and I teach kindergarten at the Integrated Arts Academy. My colleague Linda, and Fran, and Mark have all talked about parent-teacher conferences and how the district's proposal to host a celebration of learning in lieu of parent-teacher conferences this year. I am deeply concerned about this change of plans and would like to advocate on behalf of my students and their families. As Linda explained, parent-teacher conferences are crucial in supporting families and strengthening parent involvement in their child's learning. I do not believe the proposed celebration of learning would allow teachers and families that needed... That time needed to discuss students' progress on both academic and social goals or gains in a way that respects confidentiality. While many students have made great strides, several students are not yet meeting the grade-level expectations. Spring conferences are a great opportunity to partner with families about how to support struggling students that might be facing a wide range of different challenges. Parent-teacher conferences are not something that can be replaced. My biggest concern with the proposed celebration of learning is how unfair this practice is to our working, non-English-speaking families. I have 22 students in my class, eight of whom are English learners. I met with their families in the fall, and we were supported by our district's multicultural liaisons. I altered my schedule so that I could meet with families after working hours, and it was great. I was able to connect with every single one of my parents. We cannot possibly ensure that all EL families will be supported if the celebration of learning is happening in all classrooms at the same time. As a school that prides itself on nearly 100% attendance for fall conferences, I know this new forum will not be accessible to many of our families. Simply put, we cannot afford to put off parent-teacher conferences until next fall. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for a public comment? Okay. Thank you. We will move on then to Board reflections. Are there any Commissioners that would like to make a comment? Commissioner Curry?
Thanks. I just wanted to share that today, somebody passed on to me a letter from the BEA that went out to some mailing list, and I am concerned that there's misinformation out there in the letter about the negotiations process. And the most egregious of the claims in the letter was around the health insurance. Two things. One is, the letter claimed that the Board or the district imposed a health insurance plan. And I just want to be clear that while we're negotiating, we can't just impose one thing. Like, that's a violation of the rules of bargaining. We can't just say, "We're going to take this one thing and impose it." VIHI required that during negotiations, all bargaining units that didn't complete negotiations by December 31st with some negotiation, VIHI required... Everybody's in the default plan. That's a statewide requirement. The Board didn't have the ability to basically pursue the reasoning that the BEA's letter suggested. That would have been in violation of that requirement, and it would have also opened the district up to liability. So, the second thing is that the letter claims that the Board has made health insurance more expensive, and that's false. The health insurance plan in place includes no increase in the monthly premium cost, and the door is still open for 2020 under the negotiations. So, that's two things. And third, I just wanted to share a personal story around being in a meeting with Senator Tim Ash, and recently, he was talking to constituents about explaining the Governor's main mission this year, as many of us know, is to lower Ed fund spending in Vermont. And he's determined to do everything he can to not let that happen. Meanwhile, facing the pressures statewide around the veto threat, the override possibility, and the political consequences of that, but this is a time for us all to come together. Everybody's not going to get what they want. That is... That is the point of bargaining, is to work out where we can find common ground and where we can agree. And disingenuous claims about people doing things in bad... Or the Board, really. I mean, we don't claim the BEA is doing anything in bad faith. We don't claim the BEA is doing anything that would malign the BEA. But the BEA feels entitled to malign us, and all that does is divide us all so that we miss the opportunity to come together. Meanwhile, Rome is burning. The Governor is going to hurt us all a lot more and mostly hurt our kids. So, I would just make another plea for us all to please put aside the divisiveness. It's not working for anyone. It's not working statewide for the BEA, the NEA. There's a lot of political momentum that is pushing the legislature to respond to the Governor's demands. And so, I think we just have to move forward and stop the misinformation and the accusations, even if we're unhappy with what's being proposed or the outcome. There's also a detailed, probably 15-page line item budget on the website now. It has everything you ever wanted to know about the school district budget. I just... I couldn't believe how much detail's there. You can either roll it up or roll it down. You can go through all those three years. You can look at the trend. You can look at where the money went. You can look at where the money is. It's all there. So, if people want like a budget session, I'm happy to help people navigate that. But I'd like to please ask everybody to keep in mind, the Governor is holding the ultimate threat against our kids.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Are there any other comments from the Board? Commissioner Olwell?
I would like to apologize to the citizens of this city and the people mentioned in the remarks at the end of the January 23rd Board meeting for not being as well-versed in my Robert's Rules of Order as I should have been and for not calling a point of order during the final minutes of that meeting. Although caught off-guard by what was said, I, as a member of this Board, should know these rules like the back of my hand. So, I sincerely hope you will accept my apology and hope we, as a Board, will learn from this experience. That meeting was at least a huge affront to decorum of this or any Board, and I hope we can, as a new Board in March, make it one of our goals as Board to work very hard knowing and using Robert's Rules so as never to have this happen again.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. So, our communications specialist, Russ Elick, is sitting over here, and he has some of the additional information with regard to the paracontract and the healthcare insurance aspect of that. And just as a general piece of information, as noted, the paraeducator negotiations remain at impasse. The Board and Union are scheduling fact-finding. The Board has sought to skip this step and move straight to binding arbitration in order to resolve the impasse quickly, but this offer was rejected by the Union. And so, as I said, we are waiting on scheduling fact-finding. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Social Justice Union's presentation to the Board with regard to the Black Lives Flag Matter. And I would invite the students to come to the front, take the mic, and if you would, please feel free to go ahead and make your presentation.
Should we all say our names? Okay. Okay. I'm just going to say... Okay. Hi, my name's Aliza.
I'm Eli.
I'm Iowa.
I'm Alkison.
I'm Avon.
I'm Teresa.
Welcome.
And we're here to present a motion to raise the Black Lives Matter flag at Burlington High School. The Social Justice Union feels strongly that Burlington High School should stand in solidarity with Montpelier High School in raising the Black Lives Matter flag. People of color make 35.4% of Burlington School... Of the Burlington School District, and we want to be recognized. Flying the Black Lives Matter flag not only recognizes students of color, but it also creates a welcoming ethos and helps to bridge Burlington communities together.
Black students make up 14.6% of the district, yet their suspension rate is 30.6. This disparity is evident that the Burlington School District needs to better support students of color, and this is an opportunity that would lead the district in the right direction. By flying the flag, the district would validate the difficult barriers and the hostility that students of color and their allies experience.
There are common misconceptions of what the Black Lives Matter movement stands for. It aims to eliminate racial profiling, excessive use of force against people of color, and racial bias in the criminal justice system. In American society, black lives have not been as protected, respected, or valued as white lives. Hence, the need for such a movement. It's critical in today's learning environments that students of color not only go protected but promoted as a group that needs added support.
We understand that action like flying the Black Lives Matter flag may draw local, state, and/or national attention. We know that Montpelier High School has experienced some backlash, yet the majority of feedback was in the form of overwhelming support. From observing online and through in-person conversations for weeks, we have every reason to believe that the broader community of Burlington and VHS support raising the flag. There's no reason for caution due to the risk of pushback. In fact, there's only reason to stand up and support the people of color in our community.
As a state, Vermont has a rich history of supporting civil rights. We are the first state to outlaw slavery and the first to approve gay marriage through legislation. While this makes us proud, we must do more to fight systemic in-person-to-person racism. By flying the flag, the district will continue the long tradition of supporting civil rights while also create a momentum to further our efforts of combating racism.
Flying the Black Lives Matter flag would be an excellent opportunity to address the notion of Vermont exceptionalism. Though Vermont is a progressive state, many Black Vermonters express that living in Vermont is in some ways more difficult than living in the racist South. By being among the whitest states in the country, we have an obligation to further the well-being of our brothers and sisters of color so that their skin color is no longer a product of social, economic, academic, and health outcomes.
We propose the flag be flown throughout the rest of the 2017-2018 academic year. We also propose returning to the Board in April to discuss flying this flag annually for the entire month of February after doing an assessment of the consequences that the flag brings. By raising the Black Lives Matter flag, we are asking the Board to support all of its students. This is an opportunity for the Burlington community to unite, to show where our moral compass points toward progress.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.[1508.13] flag they wanted, let's say a Nazi swastika, for example. The answer is no, it would not. The reasoning is that there's a difference between public speech, governmental speech, and what's called private speech. In a private speech forum, once it's opened up, it's opened up generally. Here, however, at Burlington High School, or across the street at Burlington High School, the consent given to flying the Black Lives Matter flag would not, in our opinion, cause the flagpole to become a public forum. It would retain the government, it would still be under the governmental control of the administrators and Board of the school district. And so permission granting this motion would be no different, let's say, than a decision made by the BHS principal to offer a course in the civil rights movement as opposed to the development of Nazism, or to make any other type of choice of including one thing and excluding the other, whether it's Math 10 or, you know, English 1. Those are governmental choices made by those who administer our schools for the betterment or the education of those who are both attending and the public. So it is our opinion, which we expressed in some detail, and I won't go into all the legal analysis to bore you with that, but we believe that you may make this decision without fear of creating a public forum.
Thank you, Mr. McNeil. I want to just confirm with you that you also had an informal conversation with Assistant Attorney General Julio Thompson, and he likewise believes that flying a flag on the school flagpole constitutes government speech?
Yes. Julio Thompson is the head of the Civil Rights Division of the Attorney General's Office, and we did have a conversation with him. We indicated what our view of the matter was, and he confirmed that, they shared that the Attorney General's Office, although it was not in a position to deliver formal opinions to local school districts, given its mission to advise the state, there was nothing in the conversation that we had with him which gave us any pause in the delivery of the opinion that we've given to you.
Thank you very much. Before we proceed with motion and discussion, I would like to see if any commissioners have any questions to ask of Mr. McNeil. Commissioner Porter.
Joe, you mentioned that it's not a point of protest, it's a government choice, okay? What prevents, and I'll pick on the month of April, there's no National Heritage Month that I can find for the month of April, right?
Glad you're not picking on March, but that's...
But what prevents an entity from petitioning to hang a flag during the month of April where it wouldn't be contested against anything else that's nationally recognized but that may not see the views of the community?
There would be nothing to prevent an entity or an individual from making a request to fly the flag. Two important things. Number one, your decision, yes or no, here would not obviate the need to have permission from the district to fly anything on the district's pole because you have, you would not be giving up your governmental sovereignty, if you will, over that space in the same way that you would have the choice as to what curricula to offer. So, yes, politically, you may bear the risk in April that someone will say to either Tracy or to you as a Board or to the Central Administration, "We'd like to fly the 'Don't Tread on Me' flag." And if that were the case, you retain the right, the full right, to say, "No, that's not consistent with where we want to go. That is not, in our opinion, in the best interest." It'd be a political decision, but also a governmental decision.
Just that, you know, I did have one more question.
Go ahead.
Is the decision that we'll make tonight applicable to the district and not just to Burlington High School?
Well, as I understand it, the decision tonight is specific to Burlington High School. I haven't read the precise motion. I don't think there's been a precise motion stated yet, but if there is, it could be tailored as narrowly or as broadly as the Board wanted it to be.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'd like to invite a motion in response to the student proposal. Commissioner Curry?
Thanks. I'd like to offer this motion with great pride as a parent of a social justice union member, as well as seeing all of the social justice union members direct their energies towards this action. This is one of the, I think, biggest activist events I've seen since the 2012 protest. And I'd like to read a preamble here. The Burlington High School Student Group Social Justice Union has made a request to fly the Black Lives Matter flag for the duration of the school year at Burlington High School. The Board applauds their leadership and active engagement to stand for racial equality and justice in our schools and in society at large. Throughout American history, the humanity of our society and nation has suffered when the personhood and citizenship rights of Black people have been attacked. When Black people have fought to have their rights and humanity recognized, our whole society has improved. The Board recognizes that creating equitable and inclusive schools involves addressing many issues that go beyond the classroom walls. Change may be uncomfortable, but change is urgently needed if we are to fulfill our district promise that every student will graduate, having achieved their highest academic, intellectual, and personal potential, and be prepared to thrive in a global community. We know that flying this flag will prompt difficult discussions and a range of responses in the community. Those conversations are a necessary part of the work of educating students. The Board hereby directs the superintendent and high school principal to fly a Black Lives Matter flag on the high school flagpole for the remainder of the year. In approving the students' requests, the Board reiterates our district's core beliefs that call on us to recognize that every child can succeed, that families and community are partners in educating our children, that diversity and inclusion promotes strong schools and communities, that a welcoming, supportive climate fosters learning, and that self-reflection and accountability improve our practice.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. A second by Commissioner Harrington. I'd like to open the motion up for discussion, and I'd like to invite our student representatives to make comments if they'd like to do so.
Well, yeah, I think we're in full agreement with this motion, and one of the things that we discussed was just always that, one of the fears was pushback, and I think that the social justice union kind of aptly stated that while pushback is expected, the overwhelming majority of the high school supports and stands behind this movement, and any pushback is not a call for, to run away and be scared, but instead to stand up for what we as, well, me personally, but lacking the words for what I'm trying to say.
And this, any disagreement or pushback that we do encounter opens opportunities in the high school for great educational moments on how to handle discord in a community, which is super important as young people growing up and a great life skill. So, and just on behalf of a lot of our Burlington High Schoolers, the majority, I believe, I'd like to offer the Board our support, and I hope that you guys will vote to approve this motion.
Thank you very much. So Commissioner Gentman referenced that there was a lot of support at the high school, and I understand that the student union has brought with them the petitions with the four hundred and something signatures. I would like to just invite you to give them to Carson Wood so we could have those for our record. And I'd like then to open the floor for a discussion from the remainder of the Board members' response to the motion. Commissioner Harrington?
I am really thrilled to be able to vote in favor of this motion. I think it's a wonderful idea. At the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Meeting in January, which was held before we knew the social justice union was in the process of or going to be organizing about this, we talked about the Montpelier flag, and there was sort of a sense around the table that it would be nice if that were happening in Burlington, but we did not feel it was our job, reading the newspaper about Montpelier, to suddenly say, "We should do this right away." We thought that should come from the high school, and I'm personally thrilled that it did. I think, I also really appreciate the way the student presentation and the motion itself put the issue of the flag in the broader context of the academic, economic, and social issues, that the flag is a symbol of a lot of work in a lot of different realms of life to make large-scale change, and it's a symbol that I hope will inspire a lot of hard, good work, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Harrington. Comments from any other Board members? Commissioner Owell?
I am definitely in favor of this, and I think that it, even if it, the discussions will be good. I think that this community needs to have more of those discussions, and maybe having that flag flying at the high school will be the impetus for us as a community to start really having frank discussions about this, so.
Thank you so much. Any others? Commissioner Porter?
So there's two, I'm not looking to make an amendment, I'm looking for some discussion on things. The, and I certainly don't want to detract from the movements that occurred at the high school, but I think that their impact can be felt more district-wide by looking at the other schools that also have flagpoles. That being said, we have different student populations at different schools, okay? And from what I say is, this is student-driven by the high school students. Most likely, the same would be driven at the middle school, right? But, and where I want us to just discuss is, April is, well, I'm sorry, I think it's the Asian American Heritage Month is May. We have Gay Lesbian Pride coming up in June. We have Hispanic in September, July, right? We have National Women's History Month, right? So I don't want to, I don't mean to in any way dilute what they've done. I just want to make sure that in deference to other people, other students, that we also give them the opportunity to, you know, be student-centered, drive what the school wants to do, and, you know, when it comes down to other groups, that they also have the opportunity to fly with pride.
Thank you. Thanks. Anyone else? Commissioner McLaren?
Yeah, I just wanted to say how proud I am of the social justice union and our students at the high school that brought this forward. I think their presentation is a perfect example of the application of the education we're trying to provide. I'm proud of the district for having this conversation. I'm proud of the kids for bringing it to us in a way that was remarkably compelling and well-organized, and I'm really happy to be able to support it.
Thank you, Commissioner McLaren. I'm going to consult for a moment on Robert's rules, so if I want to make a comment? Just go ahead and do it. Okay. I want to respond to the proposal by the students that the Black Lives Matters flag be flown every Black History Month in the future, and I want to suggest that we may want to confine our motion to this year and to give students an opportunity to come to the Board in future years. I think it's an opportunity for discussion with the Board. It's an opportunity to discuss the issue again, and so rather than precluding those future discussions, which are important, I want to just suggest that our motion be confined to approving the request to fly the flag for the remainder of this academic year. I understand that, and I just wanted to respond to the student proposal. Is there any other comments, any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion as read by Commissioner Curry, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. [applause] I can't hear. Comment? What does this say? Comment? Oh, sorry. Sorry. So before we move on to the next item, I want to give the floor to the superintendent.
I'd like to share with you, and I want to commend the Board for a well-thought-out process and the decision to encourage and engage our students in their critical thinking. We, you know, our mission is to support students in developing their intellectual capacity. I think this was a great example of students driving towards the future we want, and I think the opportunity to raise this particular flag not only recognizes the issues the students have sort of emphasized around issues of color and Black students in our school, but also connects the oppressions. It says something about Burlington, Burlington students that they do care about all the other isms and other issues that we do have to face, and even all the other munts that represent other critical thoughts that we should be engaging in. So I want to commend the Board on taking a step forward in supporting our students and also in preparing our society for our future leaders who will be at the table at some point making these decisions. And with that, I'll also just make a connection back to the Board. The Board, two years ago, went through a lengthy process to develop a mission and vision, and I want to share the mission and just to show the alignment that the Board has just did, maybe unknowingly, but you've held true to the conversations that took two years of process. And the mission of the Burlington School District is to graduate students who value different cultures, so I think we've done that today. Engage with the community, see, students have done that. Communicate effectively, you obviously have been able to do that. Think creatively, skillfully solve problems, achieve at the highest academic, intellectual, and personal potential. And our vision for you is to cultivate caring, creative, and courageous people, and at the end, we want everyone to join the journey moving forward. So, thank you.
Superintendent, may I ask you about some technicalities? So would you be able to tell us about plans for when the flag might be raised and how information about that event might be shared?
Right. We will send out a message publicly to invite students, staff, and community members to join us in the flag raising. Right now, our plan is to have a ceremonial raising on Monday. We do have to do some plans this week and connect with all of the community partners to ensure, but you'll see by tomorrow, we'll give you the definitive time and date and location, but tentatively, we're looking at Monday, but you'll see something that'll come out from us, and we'll, we have to connect back with the students to make sure they're prepared for that on Monday, and then we'll send that out to everyone to join us for that occasion.
Great. Thank you very much. So that's February 19th, Monday. Great. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next agenda item, focus on learning. The BHS update courses and scheduling. Superintendent O'Bang?
So the focus on learning, I think, has gone quite well this year. It's been one of the sort of enjoyable parts of presentations because we've had an opportunity to talk a little bit about some of the operational pieces in our schools, and today we have Principal Rossakot from the BHS to talk about course scheduling and update. We, I think, a year back, we had some conversations around courses and scheduling at the high school, and we made a commitment to sort of move forward and try to continuously improve. I think we've had some success in improving. We still have work to do. We're going to continuously refine that, but today we'll have an opportunity for an update in terms of where we are and share that with the Board.
I'd just like to start by saying huge congratulations to the students of our community. This week has, this week and last has opened up Burlington High School to lots of conversations and bringing in community members to help facilitate and to open conversations with divergent voices. So it's been great, and it's given me an opportunity to work closely with these really fabulous students that you have brought to, into the high school, so, thank you. So where are we with BHS course schedules? The first slide is a timeline of where we are at and how we are developing the scheduling for this year. It's a little bit fuzzy. I don't have my glasses on. Is that fuzzy to you or is it just me? That there is, right now, we are in the week of February 12th to the 16th, so students have been opened, the student schedules have been opened up for course selection and advisory. So we are on target. This schedule was actually put out in December, so just, you know, really pointing out that we are on target, February 12th to the 16th. Next week, we move on to the middle schools where our counselors will go to both Hunt and Edmonds and begin the process of helping our incoming freshmen to schedule. This is a compressed timeline from the past to make sure that we can have schedules out to students by the end of the school year as we did last year. Let's see. The next slide is, ah, yes, a question that we had received were how many student schedules meet their needs for graduation? And the answer for that is 100% of student's schedules reflect their graduation requirements. The software that we use in Power School when we schedule requires that students' core courses are scheduled first and foremost, so the answer to that question is 100% of our student's schedules reflect that they are on course to graduate with the initial trajectory of four years, and as time goes on, that sometimes changes to five or six years, depending on the student's educational path. The next question that we often get asked is, "How many first-choice requests were satisfied?" According to a report that we receive in Power School, in 2017-18, we had 6,806 course requests. That is multiplied by the 958 students that we had, how many course requests we had, and that 84% of those initial requests were satisfied. We believe this is on par. I don't have data to compare with other schools, but in past experience, this is on par with most other high schools and colleges in course requests. And let's see. So what happens when a student does not get their first choice? Well, last year, we instituted in Power School, when students make course requests, they also make a second choice and then a third choice. So it defaults to second choice if you don't get your first-choice request, and then your third choice if you don't get that request, as it's done in other colleges and high schools around the country. If for some reason that third request still doesn't meet your schedule, then you meet with your counselor to discuss some options and some give and take. There's choices to be made in high school scheduling, of course. So that's what happens when you don't get your choice request, and, you know, then the question is, why wouldn't they get their choice request? Is it that we don't have enough classes, that we don't have enough room for the classes? A lot of questions, and there's a lot of answers to that. Primarily, it has to do with conflicts. So I've laid out an example there of what happens when they don't get their course selection, and it's often because of a conflict, as I've written in here. If a student wants to take AP US History, which is currently offered in... If a student wants to take AP US History, which is currently offered in two blocks, so we have two full classes of AP US History, so we have about, I believe, 46 to 48 kids enrolled in AP US History in those two blocks. They may also want to be in Symphony, which is only offered in Block Two because we only offer one Symphony class, and Honors Precalculus, which we only have enough students to populate one class, which is Block Three. So that student now has a conflict. They may have to make a choice. In that case, they may choose AP World History as opposed to AP US History. So when you see reflected that students don't always get their first choice, it's sometimes that they have to make a choice between what they, what they really want. So it's not unlike other colleges and, and high schools around the country. So that's where we're at with scheduling right now. We anticipate that there will be some schedule conflicts, as always. We're taking a different approach in Power School this year, and we're scheduling courses and not, not instructors, so that we can balance out courses that are offered during the day, and also looking manually at where we offer AP courses. So that way, we're not offering AP math courses. At the same time, we're offering an AP Humanities course when students may want to co-enroll. So we're looking at all of those issues. Scheduling is an extremely complex process, and very rarely does everyone get everything that they want. When we do, we're like, wow, how did that happen? It's like, it's like magic. So, no, it's a work in progress, and our counselors are diligently working with students. As I was able to share at a board meeting in the fall, we have a dedicated ninth-grade counselor now, which has freed up our 10th and 11th and 12th grade counselors to spend more time with students on course selection and college planning. We also have a dedicated EL counselor, which makes it significantly simpler for our EL teachers to coordinate schedules with that counselor. So it is a work in progress as we've implemented new structures. We've also added some additional social and emotional support to the building to afford our counselors more time to focus on academics. We have a social worker on board from Howard Center that's with us, and also one from Center Point. And we also have a new Student Assistance Program counselor who is really out and about and regularly meeting with students. So we have a lot of support for our students so that our counselors can also meet these academic needs. And very pleased to share this information from the fall of students from BHS who had early acceptance into these colleges such as Brown, American University, Union College, Wesleyan University of Denver, University of Chicago, Babson, Temple University, Tulane University, Georgetown University, McGill University, UMass Amherst, Berkeley College of Music, Champlain College, and 42 students admitted early decision to University of Vermont. So those are just early decisions. As other college acceptance come in, we can add to the list of all the great accomplishments of our students. So that's the scheduling update. So again, we're excited to be on this journey to create cultivating, caring, creative, and courageous young people that you saw here today. It's awesome. So, thank you.
So, we'll open up for questions. Thank you, Tracy, for sharing that. You'll notice that the orientation around our scheduling and course selection is a more student need-driven. I hope you talked about the way we used to do it by staff, and now it's sort of the students from the beginning, from doing the census with students in terms of what their needs are, and then taking that and then developing, and then we plop the, the staff in at the end. So that meets the students' needs as opposed to trying to fit all the staff in first.
Commissioner Owell.
So when, when a student doesn't get something they needed or wanted for, for college, and they try the next year and that, they still don't get into that class, is there any way that they then, if they've already put it off one year, that they get in the next year?
There's not a, an electronic process for that, but certainly individual conversations with counselors would help facilitate that, yes.
Commissioner Geneman, then Commissioner Wick, and then Commissioner Curry.
I just wanted to point out, just for the board, that, that 86% statistic of like first-choice enrollment might be a little bit jaded, just because that is like encompassing of all classes. So, for instance, freshmen, their English class, 100% of them will get into freshman English. So just keeping in mind that ELL classes and AP classes are always the ones that are a little bit more, harder to get into and keeping an eye on those course enrollments. We don't actually have the statistics available to do that math, but those are the ones we want to focus on.
Thank you. Commissioner Wick.
Thanks. One of my concerns just from hearing anecdotes in the past was, how do you manage, how do you figure out and what flexibility is there in terms of setting a, a number of sections of a given course? For exam, you know, like a few years ago, the example was, I think there were twice as many kids who wanted to take AP Bio than there were seats available. How do you manage that in the scheduling process?
It's a great question. What we're doing right now with course registration will in part help drive that. So we, we know we have the, the amount of resources that we have, and where we allocate them will be based on student need and then student request. So if we have, say, many kids who want to take Chinese II, you know, then we would offer a section of Chinese II. But if we have two students who don't, who want to take Chinese II, then we don't offer Chinese II. So it's in large part driven by student scheduling request.
One of the differences is that we now have the early census that we ask the students, they do that survey. So that gives the, the administration some more data in terms of what are students really looking for. So then we don't have that same challenge in terms of having 48 students who want to take that subject is not offered. Hopefully, that comes through the analysis in terms of students saying, yeah, I want to take that. Then they can sort of put that in the planning, and that mitigates having those type of challenges more often than not.
Commissioner Curry.
Thanks. So a couple of questions. Do you know offhand, or can we get what percentage of graduating students go on to higher ed or some educational?
Yeah, it's on our school profile, so it's online. I'd hate to give an incorrect number, but it's available online.
On the BHS website?
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe it's like 79% of our students are going on to post-secondary, but I, I wouldn't want to be quoted incorrectly.
Okay. And so can you talk about how the administration interacts with each department, with the staff, and when that happens in the process and how that happens?
Around scheduling?
Yeah, like around this whole process. What's the staff role and how do you interact with that?
So after students have made their course request, we have lead teachers join us in the conference room, and we actually spill our brains out on the table and decide what courses get offered where. So the lead teachers, who are representative of the departments, play an integral role into that. And it's a really high-functioning group of teachers that work with us on that.
And then another question is, there was a, there was information that came out this year that like Earth Science is now, like either requirement or happening in ninth grade, and there was this whole changeover. Can you talk about that, how that came about, why it came about, how we deal with that? Like, do you have enough notice? Is there enough information? Like, what does that all mean?
To the best of my knowledge, and when I've been involved in the change to have Earth Science as a ninth-grade requirement, brings us in alignment with the next-generation science standards. So it brings us into alignment with where we need to be going to be consistent with the middle school, so that there will be a better curriculum alignment with the middle schools and also with those around the nation. We're also being tested on the next-generation science standards coming up in May. So it's really changing of the sequence. Students who take Earth Science in ninth grade, if it fits into their schedule, will also be able to take an additional science elective. So it's really about switching the sequence of science.
And so, sorry, can I follow up?
Sure.
And so you just threw out a whole bunch of stuff there, like next generation and the national something, and like, so where does all that come from? And is that the same for all subjects?
No.
Or just science?
Just science.
Like, where do you, what happens that all of a sudden?
Yeah.
Is that the state? Is that federal? Like, what's going on?
It's federal. The, to move toward the common core standards, the next-generation science standards are what are deemed to be the core, common core of science.
Commissioner Porter.
Yep. Can you, I'm looking at the slide of the percent request satisfied.
Okay.
I don't know if you can get back to it. So anyways, it doesn't matter, we all saw it. Percent request satisfied, an increase of 10% in three years. Am I correct to assume that we're finally using software that we had but never used before?
Yes, I believe that Power School, the first, no, the first year, I believe that we used Power School with any fidelity was in 2015-16. So I believe that, I know that the processes have become continually, continuous improvement toward electronic use of the software. I believe that much more of it was done manually, and I'm sure that Isaac and Bella could speak to that.
And students can get, you can get feedback right from that when you're putting in, when you're trying to do your scheduling, right? It'll say, no, you have to take this. You have to take one of these classes. You're a senior, you don't have this yet, you've got to take this.
Right now, in the course registration, that's not actually an available option, but the guidance department, we met with prior to course registration and sat down with our guidance counselors, and they went through our transcripts and told us and made sure we knew which classes we needed to take in order to be on that track for graduation.
Thank you.
Also, certain courses, like Senior SEM, you have to click that. It won't let you hit submit, at least.
Yeah.
Certain classes that are required, like, if you're registering for senior classes and you have three math classes, then you don't need a math one, but it's recommended that you take another one. So you don't actually have to click that math button, but like Senior SEM, you have to click. It won't let you submit your registration.
Thank you.
And we'll have more data as we use this longer.
Thank you. Commissioner Owell.
So if you, if you do Earth Science in freshman year, and you said it was just changing around, what are the others, is it still like biology, chemistry?
Yes, there's still biology and chemistry. Yes, all the courses are still offered. Just Earth Science is a requirement now for ninth grade. It used to be an elective, and you didn't have to take it. You could take Biology or something else in ninth grade.
Commissioner Harrington.
I think it would be great if one of our future board learning items was about changes in the science curriculum. I was at a community forum recently, and it struck me, given the conversations I had with my scientist friends, that not every community member is quite up on what it means to study Earth Science and what the next-generation science standards offer. So maybe we could put that on our wish list for some future meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Barlow.
Hi, thank you for that presentation. I have a question about dual enrollment and what role it plays in scheduling. Do you find that there are, like, do you know the, the data on the students that are participating in dual enrollment? And do you find if they're participating because they're not getting things that they wanted to take in school, so they're taking them outside at, at colleges? Or are there other reasons?
I would only have anecdotal information. I don't have solid data around that. I do know that dual, there are barriers for dual enrollment due to our current schedule, and that students who are currently taking dual enrollment, I do not, I'm not led to believe are taking it because they can't get something at the high school. It's to enhance their experience in high school.
Can I have one follow-up?
Sure.
And is there any collaboration with other school districts to offer sections of courses that students in different districts could take together because there's not enough interest in one district? Is there anything going, like that going on?
That really is the role of Vermont Virtual Learning. So they offer courses online that are collaborative. So we do that with Vermont Virtual Learning. We do have students enrolled in that.
We do have conversations with the neighboring superintendents who have shortfalls in their course offerings, and they've already, they've offered in terms of some of the courses we have, we could have some collaborations. So there is a willingness, so we just need to kind of get together and make it happen. The other thing I would say is around the dual enrollment, we do need to do some work to create more opportunities, because I may not forget what the numbers were, but we weren't really taking advantage of it for our students as, as significantly as we could. And it could be significant for students who are moving on to college if they were to take, get access of it in terms of monetary even. Once you get to college, those are courses you're going to take. And if you go to BTC, you get an opportunity to get even two more courses, right? You can get total of four. So there's, so our students really have an, an opportunity to really capture that more significantly than some others. And we haven't really created the right platform to give them those opportunities, but that's something that I know that Tracy and her staff will be looking at, so we can get more of those opportunities.
Commissioner Wick, and then Commissioner Weston.
Question about online courses. A few parent constituents have approached me and said, well, my, my child is taking an online course, whether it's physics or a language, you know, not because it, she wanted to, but because she, for whatever reason, couldn't get into a traditional course. How prevalent is that? Do you have any data on that? Are kids taking online courses?
I don't. We could look at the number of online courses and compare it to current offerings and what's full. I think sometimes, again, this is anecdotal, that when students are pushed into online courses to something that we're already offering, it's because there's a course conflict. The student may want to take three AP courses and take Spanish IV, and there's just no way that we can accommodate that because we have one section of Spanish IV.
Yeah.
So I'd have to look at individual students, but we don't have data around that.
And there's a process, I presume, for quality control, if you will, of these online courses?
Yes, they're overseen by an online teaching specialist, and they are all approved by the Vermont AOE. Yeah.
That is a trend, though, that we should be preparing better for in terms of giving our students that access. And it takes a lot of coordination. I've had experience with some online coursering, and there was one particular organization called Angoma, which had pretty much an entire school. They had over 600 students. So they, they were virtually running a virtual school, and students could take from any school and get the right courses they need. We haven't got that level of sophistication, but that is a trend. We should be able to do that to get there so where students can have access to more courses than even they're offered in their, in their building, in terms of, you know, pretty much in the past, the trend has been, online has been sort of remedial, like, you know, if you need to get this. But we need to kind of get to the next level where it's, you know, it's more the enrichment and also the other opportunities.
Commissioner Weston.
Yeah, so I had another question about the sciences. Is next year, the freshmen are going to require to take Earth Science? And then how does that affect, because I know right now it goes, you take Biochem, and then you have the option to take Physics, or you can start picking an AP Science. How does that affect the other required sciences?
The sequence will drop one of the requirements, so.
A Bio would become sophomore? Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kleeman.
Just want to double-check. This is starting next year, and there's not really, is that going to affect this year's ninth graders? Do they need to worry about space in the courses even?
No, no, they shouldn't be worried about that for next year. And our lead in the science department, our lead teacher, had presented information at eighth-grade information night to incoming parents, and we're very open to sharing as much information as possible about this, so we can get the word out there and put information in newsletter and send information out to eighth-grade parents, too, to help communicate.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Conscious of time, as well, that we could probably keep talking about.
I want to thank the superintendent and the principal for an excellent presentation, and these focus on learnings each month have been really informative. So thank you very much. We move on to the board report, and I would like to amend the agenda, which requires a two-thirds vote. And in particular, what I'd like to do, because our students are still here, I'd like to move up to, A, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Report, which includes a motion of support for Montpelier. So with that, that was my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Harrington. All those discussion?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, Commissioner Harrington, for your report.
I'm going to start with our action item. At our, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusions January meeting happened in the week after the Montpelier Board had voted to fly the Black Lives Matter flag. And the day that we had the meeting, the news had been picked up by national media, and on that day, the Montpelier principal was getting a lot of negative public reaction from near and far. I understand from the email he sent me, eventually, as he was digging through his inbox, that eventually the email shifted to a much more positive ratio, but the day we had our meeting, we were aware that our fellow, fellow board in Montpelier had taken an action that was consonant with the principles of our district around diversity, equity, and inclusion, and we're getting a lot of negative feedback. And as I said in my remarks on the earlier motion, there was a sense at the committee table that it sure would be nice if we were doing something like that in Burlington, but we thought the thing that our committee could ask the board to do, and in fact are asking it to do, is to communicate. is to communicate our support to our colleagues in Montpelier, to say that we stand with them in their action and thus we have this motion for you. Whereas the Burlington Board of School Commissioners stands committed to the same principles that motivate the Montpelier Board, our diversity and equity vision statement commits us to committing, creating a culture that reflects, respects, and embraces the voices, perspectives, and differences arising from our diverse community, to develop a diverse and inclusive curriculum that reflects the wide range of voices, perspectives, and experiences of the students and families in our community and the world. The Montpelier Board of School Commissioners is committed to making their schools inclusive, to combating institutional racism, and to working to support every student. The board has listened to and learned from students who have courageously spoken out about the inequitable experiences of African-American students. In addition, the Montpelier Board directed the superintendent and high school to fly the Black Lives Matter flag on the high school flagpole on school days in February as a symbol of the district's ongoing work to adjust its curriculum and begin to remedy systemic racism. Therefore, be it resolved that the Burlington Board of School Commissioners supports the work of the Montpelier Board Superintendent Administrator, oh, sorry, the Board Superintendent Administrators and Students of Montpelier. We acknowledge the struggles of students of color in the face of bias, microaggressions, and stereotyping that fails to acknowledge their worth and dignity, and we recognize the duty of school districts to respond to these issues. We affirm the following: Black lives matter. Students of color face challenges to their sense of worth every day in school and in society at large. The persistent disparities we observe in education, policing, income, and health are evidence of the concreteness of the impact of racism. In the face of these challenges and disparities, it is important for the district to affirm that black lives matter. Every educator, commissioner, and district staff member comes to their work to make a difference for students. To affirm that black lives matter enhances our commitment to all students. When a school district challenges the community to affirm that black lives matter, it seeks to improve the entire community's current and future quality of life. Montpelier's Black Lives Matter flag flies as a symbol of love and courage. It represents Montpelier's desire for every student in their district to be respected and welcomed and it represents Montpelier's commitment to the ongoing work of eradicating systemic racism in the district. Our whole community benefits when everyone is included. So this is a motion coming from our committee, so it doesn't require a second.
Thank you very much. I will open the floor for discussion of this motion.
Yay. That's what I have to say. I'll just.
Commissioner Curry?
Speak and just in support of it, I think, even though, you know, I don't think it's redundant, I think it's great for all school districts to signal solidarity on important issues like this.
Any other comment? Yes, Commissioner Weston?
Just on behalf of the students, I'd like to second what Commissioner Curry said and are supportive of the motion.
Thank you. In that case, let's take a vote. All those in favor of supporting this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes unanimously and I will, with great pleasure, communicate this to the Chair of the Board, the Superintendent, and the Principal of Montpelier High School. The next item on our.
Wait, can I finish our meeting report?
Oh, so sorry.
We've, we've had an awesome, awesome series of meetings. We ended up having our January and February meeting a week apart because of quirks of scheduling and spent a lot of time talking about the report we got from the Burlington Police Department around the activities of the Student Resource Officer and that's a topic that I hope will carry over to our March meeting. I'm meeting with Chief Delcozo next week to talk about scheduling a visit from the School Resource Officer to the, what I hope will be the March committee meeting, which is going to be on March 20th so that we can avoid a conflict with town meeting day. Our, so there's fairly comprehensive minutes of our meetings, including our, what month was it? December? November? We, I forgot to submit our last round of minutes at the last month's meeting. So I think there's three months of our committee minutes in the consent agenda. So I encourage you to read them and come and listen to the School Resource Officer. We've had a fascinating conversation with the police officers.
Thank you. Any additions to the report from other committee members? Thank you. We'll move on to the Burlington City Council Liaison Report. So sorry. Commissioner McLaren?
It's fine. In the interest of time, I'll just say that nothing's changed since our last meeting in terms of any of the relevant topics we were talking about. And, you know, I continue to have productive conversations, I think, with both the city and am looking forward to having similar conversations with the agency directly soon about some of those things. So, yeah, we keep moving forward. Good faith.
Commissioner McLaren, do you mind sharing with us what conversations, what topics you'd be discussing with the committee?
Well, I mean, we've had ongoing conversations, obviously, about the pilot funding and there are some, I think, potential fruitful ways to continue to have the city support some of the work the district is doing, particularly around the Community Justice Center and some of our restorative practices where I have nothing concrete to tell you about that, but we're, that I think, I'm hopeful that that moves forward in the city's budgeting process and we'll keep working on fleshing out all the details about what that looks like.
Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner McLaren?
I have one question.
Commissioner Barlow?
Would, would that work you just talked about, would that be in addition to the money that the city's already committed for our applying?
Yeah, my understanding is that's new, revenue, a new funding source.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the State Legislature Liaison Report from Commissioner Barlow.
I actually shared with you some of this information already, so I apologize for being a little bit redundant. There are two bills. I may have spoke about them last time, but they actually got bill numbers between our last meeting and this meeting. There's H 795, an act relating to the use of funds by school districts and municipalities. And this is an attempt to get a change, meaningful change, and 16 V S eight, section 4029, that would give communities like Burlington some additional flexibility to use municipal resources for funding noneducational items currently funded in school budgets. And if passed, this would theoretically give us access to city funds like pilot. And so that would maybe open up some, some real opportunities that aren't, that don't exist currently. And one development around that bill is that the PTOs, the Unified PTO had written to the city, I think in our discussion of it and their discussion of it with the mayor has, has resulted in the mayor actually supporting this bill. And he's going to Montpelier on Thursday for, for local government day and I think there is a contingent of PTO people going with him to lobby and advocate for this. So that's, that's really cool. And additionally, there's a bill, H 873, an act relating to amending the excess spending calculation, which would essentially, if passed, allow us to exclude capital construction and debt service from the excess spending calculation. It could be useful if we ended up doing a lot of bonding and having a lot more debt service that might be subject to, that might subject us to additional penalty. So, and then, and the last thing I'll say is we met with Representative Carol Odie on the second to discuss potential impacts and benefits of the legislation that's coming out of House, ways and means to change the funding formula. And that's very fluid still and I guess stay tuned on that one. We're going to try to feed them back in somewhat real time, information on how that would impact or be beneficial to Burlington as that emerges more. I guess that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Barlow. Are there any questions for Commissioner Barlow? Comments? Commissioner Curry?
I just wanted to comment that because of our amazingly comprehensive, detailed line item budget that is now on the website, it's possible to see how much our debt service actually did add to our budget this year and that having that be excluded from our basis would make a real difference in freeing up money for direct education.
Thank you very much. Commissioner McLaren?
Yeah, I just want to thank Commissioner Barlow for the leadership on this. I think, you know, the two bills he talked about in the absence of a equalized pupil formula that I think adequately recognizes the challenges of districts like Burlington and, and sort of recognition of the statewide funding formula that is designed to provide equal opportunity across the state. I think the, the first bill in particulars will provide meaningful changes and the state no longer funding school building in, in a scenario where the state had stopped doing that. The second bill will at least not penalize us for trying to create modern learning environments for our students. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to the next item on the agenda, which is the PTO report. Commissioner Curry?
So I was invited to and attended three PTOs this last month. First was Hunt and that was a great turnout and Principal Matty Shine came and we had a really good conversation about the budget, a lot of good questions and good discussion. And Matty shared some really nice information just about the way Hunt is approaching challenges. And then went to PTO at IAA and we did a restorative circle, didn't have a lot of time left. I had to go to a concert at the high school, so we didn't, we weren't able to talk about the budget, but offered to, you know, be available for another meeting if people wanted it. Then at SA, Ryan came to that one. That was an amazing discussion we got into. They had a lot of questions about the equity data and the, the kind of gap that persists and what that means for the magnet schools. And we got into an excellent, incredible discussion about tier one instruction because there was a longtime teacher there, Mary Wyeth, who's amazing. And so we were able to like really just have a rich discussion about the whole, the interventionist and the, what do you call it? First best. Instruction. Instruction and helped everybody understand what that means and then, you know, what, what that means for kids who come to school with all the tools that many of our kids come with versus the kids who come to school without the tools that my kid comes with, for example. And then they shared the letter that they were writing to the city about the pilot funds and that they, I think, circulated among all the PTOs. Is that right? And just asked for feedback about that. So Ryan, do you have anything to add on around SA?
No, it was great.
Yeah, it was really fun. So that's it. I don't have any more outstanding invitations for February, but I tried to keep everybody up to breath on, on the legislative stush. But I think we do want to follow up on inviting PTO people again, like, to ask the governor to come and one of our city councilors has offered to help with that. So that's kind of on the burner for maybe after the town meeting day budget vote.
Great, thank you. So moving on to the student commissioners' report.
So today, February 13th, was statewide blackout day in high schools across Vermont. BHS students participated in this in support of the Black Lives Matter movement and of Black History Month. So students today were wearing all black and that was successful, especially after this meeting. It was great.
And on the topic of, you know, discussion in our community, last week controversy was sparked. We had some posters which were put up by the Young Republicans Club titled, "Police are not racist. All lives matter." It drew concern from the Social Justice Union over the use of statistics and the appropriate use regarding, yeah, statistics from a Washington Post article. And the Social Justice Union responded with a poster of their own titled, "Police are not racist. Black lives matter." And it opened up the floor for meaningful discussion in our school in a way that I think was well-handled by both sides, so.
And on a different note, this weekend is the Hunt Middle School play of Annie. So I think this Friday and Saturday and maybe, is it one of Sunday? Do you know? I don't think there is.
I think it's just Friday and Saturday.
Yeah, but that'll be fun.
Thank you both for a great report. We're moving on next to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. First item I wanted to share was a bit of a milestone. We've been, we've been sort of engaged in the conversation around suspension and suspension data and we've been sharing that with D and E committee and also at the board level in our sort of policy boards. But I wanted to bring this to the attention of the board. We've reached a milestone, which, based on the data we've looked in the most recent years, this has never happened. I'm not sure how far back it can go, but it maybe never happened. Percentage of black students in our, in BSD is about 14%, 14.6 to be precise, in terms of total moments. In December, we reached a threshold where the percentage of suspensions was only, was 12%, which is below the norm. And that has never happened in, as far as back we can look in Burlington. And I'll do a little, I'll do a little click here. If you can see the, the chart here will show you. So here it is. Here's the 12% and 14%. And you can notice, even, even though we had progress last year, at the beginning of this year, you could see we went from 67 to 54, to 40% to finally reaching this 12%. Reason why, I think this is really significant, one, it demonstrates that some of the, some of the strategies we're using are effective and starting to work. And I think the other significant thing is the attitude, right? In terms of our administrators and our staff, in terms of how they perceive students and how they perceive discipline is starting to change. I'm not guaranteeing that this trend is going to happen throughout, but the fact that we've done it, now at least I can go back to our staff and say, "We did it." That means we can do it again. And I wanted to mark this, this moment and let the board know that your efforts in terms of pushing us around improving in this area has bearing fruit and we've hit a, a mark that we can be proud of. And so we'll continue to do the work and as we provide more resources and supports and develop capacity around restorative practices and continue to look at our lens in terms of how we respond to student behaviors, I think we'll see a trend that we'll be, we'll be proud of as we move forward.
Great. Commissioner Kleeman?
If I'm remembering correctly, isn't December sometimes a tougher month for suspensions with kids around the holidays and everyone amped up? So this is extra impressive.
Yeah, absolutely. Usually, you know, it's, it's sort of the one, two, three-strike phenomenon. You know, usually by December, students are tired, you know, teachers, administrators are fed up. They might have given that student an opportunity in September, October, and then by December, it's like, okay, that's it, had it. So sometimes we do see a spike just before the, the break because people have just had fed up. So for it to hit this number says that something is changing, right? So we'll have to sort of capture that. We're going to have to, we've been having continuous conversations at our systems leaders. We've been talking about, you know, what's going well and what's not going well. And so I think that's helped in terms of doing analysis around, around that. And one of the things I was concerned about was often when you sort of put this target forward, then people stop disciplining students or having the correct responses. And you think, oh, you're just not suspending kids anymore. But that is certainly not the case. We still have challenges and we're still dealing, we're just finding different ways to work through them. And eventually it's, it's going to help us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Barlow?
Restorative practices playing a role in the reduction?
I would say anecdotally, yes. We don't have the data yet. It's too early to say that's the, the sole thing. But I know that in talking with administrators and when I ask them the question, when they get their data, because you'll see in a report, I think at D and E we're going to do this, we're going to do the SWISS data from the schools so you can see specifically what's happening in each school. And they'll be able to tell you the stories, why things are, are different. And I know in a few schools, they attribute their approach of restorative practice as significant in terms of making the change, in terms of, but I think it's a combination of things. I think when our staff start to see that this is an approach that we can use, it changes the way you respond to, to, to behaviors as well, too.
Thank you.
Next item?
So this is a, a report on BHS graduation and where we need to be. The Agency of Education has outlined three pillars on which we must base all education in the state of Vermont and those are proficiency-based learning and grading, flexible pathways, and these need to be demonstrated through personalized learning plans. So you'll find a lot of information on these slides because I know they do come into public record. Some of it is a little bit repetitive, but the Vermont Educational Quality bit repetitive. But the Vermont Educational Quality Standards require that students demonstrate proficiency in math, English, science, social studies, physical education, the arts, and transferable skills. Those are the required areas of demonstrated proficiency to graduate in the state of Vermont. Act 77 requires that students have personalized learning plans that reflect flexible pathways. The Agency of Education will be taking an annual snapshot of schools and they will be looking for indicators of flexible pathways in students and that will be a measurement of our goals toward continuous improvement. Some of those indicators include college course completion, which speaks very strongly to the need for dual enrollment, which we were referencing earlier, SAT, so looking at numbers of students taking the SAT, not really necessarily looking at their scores, but numbers taking the SAT, as well as students taking the ACT. Of significance there is that at BHS, we offer both the pre-ACT and the PSAT to students. Not all school districts are offering the pre-ACT. Those are things that the district is paying for and providing opportunities for students, which in hopes be the gateway for more students to taking the ACT and the SAT. We offer that to all students to create a more equitable environment for students to succeed. Advanced Placement Test is another indicator that the Agency of Ed will be looking at. International, international Bachliorette Assessments, which we are not participating in currently at BHS, CLEP Assessments. I've found here in Vermont that a lot of folks don't know, but those, but those are tests that you take in which you receive college credit. And ASVAB, which is a military assessment, and also industry-recognized credentials. Industry-recognized credentials are a requirement of all technical center programs in the state. So, students enrolling in technical center programs will receive industry-recognized credentials, which is part of the information that AOE will be looking at our school health with. So, those are important. Additionally, recommended elements in a flexible pathway are mentorships, internships, virtual learning, and independent study options. So, how do we get there? Proficiency-based learning, all students who will be graduating in the year 2020 are required to graduate demonstrating proficiencies. Burlington High School, as all high schools around the state are building the airplane as we fly it, I like to say. So, we are in the midst of proficiency-based learning outcomes being identified. We're actually a little bit ahead of the curve than some of the schools in the state because we did have foundation funding from Nellie May Educational Funding that set us in motion in that before it was required. So, that is a requirement for all students in 2020. And again, they must demonstrate proficiency in math, English, science, social studies, PhysEd, the arts, and transferable skills. This is all to be seen through PLPs or personalized learning plans. We have done a, I believe, a fair job in reaching down to the middle schools. It was a requirement that came on to the ninth graders, those coming into ninth grade last year. And that's really hard to start something, so we've made a bridge to the middle schools so that now our seventh and eighth graders are engaging in the process of beginning PLPs. Some teams in the middle school, I believe, are referring to them as portfolios. So, sometimes when I say the students have PLPs, the pushback is, "No, they don't." But then if you ask the students if they have a portfolio, the answer is often yes. So, it's a matter of semantics there. But it is a requirement that all students have PLPs. So, we've begun that work. What we need to continue to develop now is a way to shepherd those PLPs so that they demonstrate proficiencies. It will become practice within the next year or two that our students in the middle school and beginning in high school will have PLPs. I know that's uncomfortable for those of you who have students in ninth and 10th grade in middle school, but kids are a lot more adaptable than the adults are and they will know what a PLP process is. Our next stage is how do we make sure that those PLCs actually demonstrate proficiencies to graduation? So, again, our path for getting to what the state is requiring us to have for flexible pathways, personalized learning, and proficiency graduation is to really look at multiple pathways toward graduation. If you look at our current graduation requirements, which we'll look at in just a minute, you will see that there are not multiple pathways to graduation. There is a singular pathway to graduation. That I'm advocating needs to be altered so that we can be in alignment with requirements. So, again, I'll hear Act 77 talking about flexible, personalized learning plans, that we need to put a system in place so that we can demonstrate continuous improvement on our personalized learning plans. Continuous improvement is the buzzword of the day with AOE. They are not looking at former NCLB requirements for schools to make adequate yearly progress. They're looking at continuous improvement. That really needs to be reflected in our personalized learning plans. So, this is a regional comparison, it's a link in there, of graduation requirements. And there's some significant things in here for us to review. Sort of pulling it up over here. CVU is currently in their program of studies showing proficiency-based graduation requirements. So, they're not using credits at CVU. They are outlining three different plans of pathways, flexible pathways to graduation. They offer three sample plans of graduation. One of those is the four-year college plan, which is the gold column or orange column, it appears on here to the left. Then they also outline a two-year college plan and then one for those who are going to a world of work plan. So, if you look all the way down, you see that there is no credit requirement. The standouts here for the Agency of Education are that physical education is a 1.5-year requirement. That's the only seat time requirement in the state is physical education. So, if you go across the columns, then you'll see Colchester, South Burlington, Essex, and our current graduation requirements. Those are all in the blue columns going down. And they're comparable, fairly comparable across the columns, so across the rows. So, if you look at the English requirements, the social studies requirements, the science requirements, and the mathematics requirements, the core are very similar. As you look at fine arts, we're all, again, very similar. CVU does not propose a fine arts requirement because, again, they don't have requirements. They need you to demonstrate proficiencies there. Health is required by the Agency of Education, but it's not a seat time requirement, it's a proficiency requirement. So, you'll see that all of the districts across the rows are requiring a .5 or a single semester in health class. So, then as you go down to the elective columns, that's where you see more variety across the region. You'll see that South Burlington has a one semester requirement in information technology, as does Essex. Burlington does, high school does not. You will see that currently Burlington High School has a 1.0 business requirement for graduation. We are standalone in that. You will see that world languages, that only Essex and Burlington High School have a world language requirement to graduation. Again, not being flexible in our pathways to graduation. And Essex offers a course and they require a course called Practical Arts for them to graduate. You'll also see in the PhysEd rows going across where there's an asterisk, that indicates all of the schools across the region that are currently offering physical education credit for those who are participating in athletics. You will see that Burlington High School
Varsity Athletics.
Is not, yeah, varsity athletics, both JV and varsity varies among the schools.
And how much credit do they get?
It varies among the schools. One of them, actually, we don't have MMU up here, but they offer a full 1.0 credit for participation in athletics. The majority of these schools, I believe all of these, offer a .5 credit in PhysEd for participation in athletics. So, that's a significant difference. You'll also see that, and I wrote my highlights, and I'm going to thank Isaac for sitting with me this morning and going over, make sure you highlight that. So, that was great. So, you will see that the requirements that we have do not provide opportunities for flexible pathways. Everybody is on the same requirement courses for graduation. How do we get to where we need to be in 2019, 20, which is really, really close? So, for next year, what we will be doing, if you move over to the, the green column there, is to offer a .5 credit for participation in athletics that will be overseen by our PE department. EQS requires that any course credit that is given is overseen by certified teachers. So, we're not looking to alter that in any way, shape, or form. It will restructure some of the teacher assignment in that department. Also, we'd like to, we are adding a .5 elective in overseeing the personalized learning process. That's really important. Again, if we institute this for 2018, 19, those who are graduating in 2019, 20 with that requirement will have that. So, it will be an elective course required unless you demonstrate proficiency. So, that is an addition and we can do that within the existing resources in the high school. So, that will not mean additional staff, it means shifting some staff around. And it also means that the business requirement would go away. That does not mean that business electives will go away, but that the requirement for business goes away because, again, it doesn't offer a lot of flexible pathway opportunities when students have to meet these graduation requirements. So, that's where we're going for 2018, 19. Significant changes are to offer half PE credit for participation in JV or varsity athletics. We're actually meeting with the PE team tomorrow to discuss moving forward, to adding a .5 course in PLP oversight and to eliminate business as a requirement. So, the next slide, ah, so actually, the next slide was exactly what I was just saying. The next steps are to align our graduation requirements with the AO, our graduation requirements with what the Agency of Education requires, which is demonstrated proficiency in the core for PhysEd, the arts, and transferable skills. And then we'll be in alignment with AOE graduation requirements. Also, to create opportunities for flexible pathways by offering more opportunities for students to take different electives and that we will monitor the PLPs for continuous improvement. So, those are our next steps that we can move forward with next year. So, the next slide is where we will be in 2019, 20. And this is a sample of proficiency-based graduation requirements for 2019, 20. Rather than look at the CVU approach where they have three differentiated plans where a student could go directly to work, to a two-year college or a four-year college, we will be going to two plans, a two-year college and a four-year college, because I don't ever want to set forth a path for a student where they cannot get into college or make a change when they're in 11th grade and say, "Hey, I decided now, yeah, I want to go to a four-year college." They can still make this happen if they're on this path. So, that's how we get where we need to be in the next two years. It's a lot of change and I do understand that and it's going to take a lot of work on behalf of the, the teachers at the high school to partake in these changes and to support it. But it's, it gets us where we need to be in, in a relatively short amount of time.
Thank you. Commissioner Barlow? Sorry, I'm losing my voice. And then Commissioner Porter.
I just had a question about the change about giving, giving credit for participation in athletics. So, I, two parts to my question. The first is, so this is just going forward, so starting next year, so student athletes won't be able to receive credit for participation they've already had?
Not, no.
Okay. And secondly, they get
Good question.
They get a half a credit for each sport they participate in or?
They can earn up to a half a credit. So, a single semester would be a quarter credit.
Okay.
So, but we're, again, we're meeting with the PE staff tomorrow, so I don't really want to say what it's going to look like until we have their work on it because we need to absolutely get their, their input on what it's going to look like.
Okay.
So, we can share more after we meet and put things in motion. But we've been looking at the requirements of all the surrounding schools and what they have. And again, there's a lot of variety among it. In some schools, I think it's South Burlington, the PE credit is actually overseen by their athletic director and not through their PE teachers.
Commissioner Porter?
Yeah, on that, on that same line, I, I'm actually going down your path, Mark, where I'm thinking that if somebody spends three years of a sport, right, that there should be cred, there should be more credit allowed to death than somebody that spends one year of sport, right? But I also know there's numerics to this, right? So, a three-credit class is 136 contact hours. I think something like that is what they came up with. So, in this case, you'd look at how many, for the PhysEd credit, how many contact hours are involved in that? And if there's a sport that allows that many contact hours, it would be easier to equate to the 1.5. Or the .5, they play three sports, they get 1.5, right? That eats it all up.
Yeah. Where we have some challenges is that the PE curriculum has requirements that need to be demonstrated. So, the majority of the schools, you will see that the 1.0 has to be earned through a PE course because there's certain curriculum that's taught. And then the .5 is where the flex piece is.
Thank you. Commissioner McLaren?
So, in, hopefully you didn't cover this while I was out for a minute, but we're moving towards proficiency-based graduation requirements.
Should you cover that when you run?
No, but, you know, when I look at the, the, what's the potential for 2019, 2020, the way I read that is years, not necessarily proficiency. So, how do the four years of English translate into like demonstrating proficiency to a graduation level?
Yeah.
Because it, it can't just be, take four years of English.
Right. No, that's a great question. The way that the faculty have been developing proficiencies within the course content is that there's, they have to demonstrate proficiencies over time and that at the end of the four years throughout the curriculum that they're providing, they would have demonstrated the curriculum at the end of the four years.
Okay.
So, yeah, I try to wrap my head around that one a lot. That's a hard one to explain.
Yeah, it's probably, so I can't demonstrate proficiency in one year to graduate of English, even if, if, yeah, yeah, okay. And then I just had one other question about, is the business requirement like a relic of when we were teaching typing or like keyboard skills?
I don't really know. I wasn't one.
In terms of that, that?
No one else is doing it.
Right.
Yeah, no, but are we teaching, is that something we teach kids in any part of our curriculum? Is it earlier or we just, that kids come to school with the ability to use a computer at this point?
Yes, they do.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Jeneman?
Just in response to that, so, we used to have an economics class at the high school, but we no longer have that. And so, that, we also, so that was really one of the major components of the business program, along with senior sem, which is already mapped out in another requirement. And so, we have, like, we have computer programming classes, but they're not as relevant as they once were for like mandatory, like necessity.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Commissioner Olwell, then Commissioner Harrington. And just want to remind folks of the time and
Oh, okay.
Just to think about that. Commissioner Olwell?
I question how you're going to be proficient in a world language in one year. I mean, speaking another language, I know that's almost impossible.
Yeah. Well, the, the idea is that students are not coming to us with no language basis. The students are taking classes at the middle school. We know that that has altered.
Have you seen what we teach at the middle school?
I have begun to become familiar with it, yes.
But it's not going to make
Commissioner, I just want to ask if Tracy could finish her comments.
Yes, and the world language department has laid out the proficiencies. So, I'd have to look at their individual department proficiencies. We've relied on them. But I agree, proficiencies, but then, you know, the, the pushback on that is we have students coming to us speaking three and four languages who do not get a requirement because of they haven't sat in a Spanish class for a year.
Really?
And that's a fact. Yes, because we can't, we have no tool to demonstrate their proficiency because proficiency goes beyond spoken language and we don't have an assessment that says this student writes well in their native language. So, we have students who are multilingual, sitting in Spanish one class because we don't have the tool to demonstrate their proficiency. That is a fact.
You know, there's one, when you talk about language specifically, there's a difference between the nomenclature we're using proficiency and fluency, right? So, we're talking about the subject matter in terms of meeting the proficient, sort of the outcomes for that.
Yeah.
As opposed to fluency, what you're talking about is actually being able to, on the continuum, be able to be fluent in that language, right?
Yeah.
Because there's different stages.
Because the proficiencies are also inclusive of cultural awareness. So, that's laid out in the proficiencies as well.
Because currently right now, even with Because currently, right now, even without language programs, I would say that there aren't many students who go through the three years or whatever, and they come out fluent in that subject.
Right.
Even though they've taken it three years in a row, they're still not fluent.
Yeah, very much. So I can spit in a, sit in a advanced Chinese level class, and where the students are with their ability to speak the language is very different than where it is in the, in Spanish or in French, very different. So even though they're sitting in class, it definitely means something. I'd like to also be very careful about what flexible pathways means. The AOE is very clear that it is not pay-to-play opportunity because of equity issues, so we need to be very mindful as we move forward in what flexible pathways means, and that may mean that I could send my child to a computer camp over the summer, and I want that elective credit for them, but Johnny, who lives down the street, doesn't have the means to go to Boston for a computer camp in the summer, and what does that do to equity in our education? So that's something that we are, again, flying the, building the airplane as we fly it, but that's something from an equity lens, we need to be very mindful of when we speak about flexible pathways, because almost on a daily basis, we're receiving requests to give flexible pathway credits for what we deem to be pay-to-play activities.
Thank you. Commissioner Harrington?
This is closely aligned to what I do in my day job up at UVM, so I'm not entirely sure whether I'm speaking with a higher ed hat or board member hat, but let me just briefly say, many institutions of higher education deal with language credit issues with multilingual students by awarding language requirement credit for work in English. So I think that's a, there's a policy issue there that the district could explore to make a more equitable and sensible approach to welcoming multilingual students and recognizing the role of expanding language study, as they do a lot of coursework in English, if that's not their first language. Secondly, I know how much professional development and teacher expertise and teacher leadership goes into implementing this sort of shift, and we are so fortunate that the teachers at the high school have been such leaders in the state in working on proficiency-based education. So Jocelyn Fletcher has made some really wonderful movies explaining what proficiency-based learning is, so I would recommend them to everybody else on the board. But I hope as we move forward, we'll think about ways to really continue to focus on that leadership. One area of concern I had, which I'm not sure if this is about us, or probably more about the state, that list, the slide you showed that had, it was like a billboard for big educational testing companies.
Yes, I agree.
I just, I think we need to be careful to keep our emphasis on, the nice thing about student proficiency is it prepares students to move both into the workplace or higher education where people care about, are you learning, can you do the work, can you do things? So I think a proficiency-based approach serves students well no matter where they want to end up. I love that you don't want to set up a pathway that would forestall college for a student who wants to do that. I think that the personalized learning plans also offer another way to think about flexibility. If you think about the students who are here from the Social Justice Union, a student could, in a sense, choose to focus some of their attention on the courses that they teach and think, I want to become a better public speaker, because I'm interested in being an activist, and so I'm going to either select my electives or work with my teachers to be able to do more presentations in class, whereas a student who's interested in communicating visually might focus more on assignments and project choices where they're doing visual representations of data and whatnot. So I just want to encourage to think, encourage us to think about flexible pathways as not just about what courses you take or where you think you're going to end up, but how are you making sense of what you're learning and what you're taking away from it? Because you and I could take the same course and take some, learn the same material, but at the same time be able to name some different skills that we take out of it. And I think that's the promise of this kind of shift, if we keep our emphasis.
And, you know, I think you're absolutely right, and it's sort of a micro-focus of what I see as an in-between step, and I don't know how we could make this happen, but this is a dream to me, that our program of studies becomes no longer a static PDF file that is organized by content area. Right now, if you look at our program of studies, it's a reflection of our campus. We have math and science here, we have humanities over here, and nothing meets in between. Our program of studies should be identifiable with a PLP, so that a student can say, I'm particularly interested in a STEM focus. And then when you go into the program of studies, it lists a bunch of different career pathways on different levels, whether it's world of work, two-year college, technical school, four-year college, graduate school, lays out all of those career pathways, and then it says, okay, these are suggested courses, much like a college major would look like. And we don't have that. We have a PDF file of a program of studies that is static, and it's broken down by department because it's all based on previous concepts of what graduation requirements are. I don't, I don't think it's a big stretch, but I know I don't have the technology skills to make that happen. I need a technology wizard to make that happen for us.
Thank you. Commissioner Curry?
Thank you for this presentation, it's the most comprehensive I've ever seen on our progress and direction. And thank you for not doing what CVU is doing and recreating the whole tracking again that was supposed to disappear over the last three decades.
Yes.
But having said that, it appears that we do, we are, we are kind of creating tracking. So I'm wondering if there's any way of avoiding that, and you don't have to reply to that now. I'm just going to throw out some questions in the interest of time, you know, you don't have to answer them, because they're just, some rhetorical, but I'm also curious. But one is, I'm just interested in knowing if we've ever considered going to a trimester schedule, if that would work, and could the YES program and community service be combined? The YES program results in gross inequities, that would be nice to see more well-thought-out and intentional, and, you know, having a really nice coordinated community service week or two weeks would be amazing in the community in terms of connecting with employers and organizations and other, all that. And then, like, what's, what I'm particularly interested in, and I agree with Commissioner Harrington, is that, you know, more and more, because of equity issues, colleges are eliminating SAT requirements and ACT requirements, so it seems like that might fall off the map soon anyway, but that also colleges, many colleges don't require four years of science and four years of math, like the best colleges. So you don't have to answer, but I'm confused, why would we create two tracks when the best colleges in the nation, except maybe the Ivy Leagues, you know, and are not requiring these things? And they're moving away from these things, and I know you have an answer, but you don't have to give it.
I'm like, you want to.
And people who want to go to Ivy Leagues can go anyway, so that's kind of my confusion.
And I guess my ask back is that the commissioners help support that word, because the, the perception and the pushback from the community is that we need to be offering all of that, or your children do not get into the best colleges. And that is the perception that exists, and I will share with you that I've spent the entire year convincing the faculty, and many of them are on board, that we need to, first of all, begin to offer single semester courses and not so many one-year-long courses.
Yes.
Because if a student is not being successful in November.
Right, yes.
They are sure as heck not going to be successful in May or June.
Yeah.
So we're pushing toward that, and we've added a considerable number of single semester courses this year, still a big push with some faculty.
Yep.
Because their courses are sequential.
So data, I would just recommend data. Getting the data from the best colleges and lining it up, I mean, you can see a spreadsheet, you know, just pull out 30 of the best colleges across the nation and look at their requirements, and you're going to see.
I will do that. And without single semester courses, we can move nowhere with flexible pathways, because we can't do dual enrollment, and there's so many other options that are limited, and we don't have our late semester program that we're hoping to launch. So many things are limited by not having single semester courses.
Thank you. This has been a very, very rich discussion, I want to invite the superintendent to move on.
No, thank you very much. I think one of the things, you've seen some progress, and Commissioner Curry, you probably don't remember this, but we had a committee meeting maybe a year ago, two years ago, and we were talking about graduation requirements, and we said we had some work that we had to do, and now we have at least a target of where we want to go. And Tracy and I have had conversations, we're not happy with the endpoint yet, there's still more work to, but part of it is, we do need your support in terms of attitude and change, because, you know, in talking with parents, they still have the notions from when they went through school, and what was the requirement to get to wherever they got to, and making that shift in terms of education is a little different, and working with our staff as well, too. So that takes, implementing change is, of course, you know, is difficult, so we're trying to find ways to stage it in a way that we can get some collaboration in getting in there. And I'd say that we're also fortunate to have Tracy leading at this time because of her tech school background and her experience in New York State, where they've gone through this previously, so she has those experiences to kind of share and bring forward as we move forward. So thank you, Tracy, for your leadership.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thanks.
Okay, there's a document, there's a document on the, on the board docs, financial questionnaire, and we need to share with this, part of the requirement of the superintendent and his designate filling out this questionnaire. This was a really good document that we think we're going to infuse into our annual report, so you'll see it in one of the monitoring reports, because it's really kind of a compliance check, and the questions, some of the questions are sort of outdated because just the state we're in, but it gives us an opportunity to kind of review some of the operational functions, and particularly around budget piece. So we're just going to, I'm going to ask Nate to just highlight quickly through it, we're not going to spend a lot of time, but we wanted the board to be aware of it and to know that this will be something that we'll be sharing on an annual basis, and it's a requirement for us to respond back to the state that we've done this analysis and share with the board as well.
So the questionnaire is a series of yes/no questions. As you can see, one of the things that can make it a little hard to kind of evaluate the responses is it's not written in such a way as a yes is always a good answer, and a no is always bad, or vice versa, which would make it more helpful, I think. But nevertheless, it is the tool that we are required to complete, and for the most part, what you're looking at here are things that reflect the types of controls that we might have in place for our financial processes. So when there are questions here about who maintains things, it's asking, you know, essentially, does the superintendent know who maintains these things? And then there are questions about kind of how we do the business. One of the ones that's featured on there are all bank statements reconciled monthly by whom, and that's one that you might remember hearing, because that was one of the comments in our audit management letter. So that's a good, gives you a good sense of kind of what the auditors look at, and that is reflected on this report as well. So there's areas here for us to improve on, and there are some areas where we're doing pretty well already. For the most part, as you can see, when there's questions about who maintains the financial data, it's maintained in the business office. The one thing that is worthy of, I think, just pointing out again, is what this questionnaire doesn't reflect are some of the activity accounts that are maintained at the schools, another item that's been in our management letter, and that is on the horizon to be addressed.
Thank you. We can move on.
The, we wanted to unveil the annual report for this year. It is posted on our website, and you'll see, the document is very similar to the last few years in terms of the way we've laid it out. There is information around the, about the district overviews, we talk about a budget plan, and priorities, and variables, the staging in terms of the process around that. Then we talk about some of the initiatives in terms of that has come to the board, in terms of like capital improvement and the bond that was passed last year, and then there's a number of other elements in terms of what's happening in the district, in terms of changes that we implemented from the previous year, and there is some budget information here as well, too. So we wanted to share with you that it is available on the site, lots of content information, it's a good place to go to when you're looking for information on the district in terms of number of students, or what the demographics were, or, you know, what the initial plans were, it gives you that perspective, and people need to know that the content is reflective of what happened last year, right? And so it's always that kind of a year kind of behind. Any comments, Nate, in terms of the budget piece, or?
No, just a little teaser, most of the detailed budget stuff's in the document.
So we just wanted to share, let you know that it's there, it's available, you can share it with your friends, read it to your children at night, whatever. Okay?
Thank you. Good, move on then.
All right. So as I just mentioned, and is referenced in the annual report, we also published our budget document for the year, so that's up on the website, and there are pages upon pages of budget numbers, but I think there's probably more digestible and useful content in kind of the first 10 or so pages where we discuss some of the proposals in the budget, as well as the tax increases, there's a little bit of discussion about revenues and that sort of thing. So it's, again, the second year that we've kind of gone with a bigger, more comprehensive supporting document, and, you know, there's a lot in here to take in, but to the extent that we have an opportunity to make this stuff available to those who are interested in reading it all, we felt like it was important just to announce it here and let folks know that it is available. And we're going to leave the prior year's document up as well, so that's still available. But this is probably the most relevant content that we can put out there in terms of sharing with folks who want additional detail about the budget they're going to be voting on in March.
Thank you.
Just one question.
Commissioner Barlow?
Is this laid out in the same way as the document from last year? So if people wanted to do comparables of certain categories of spending year to year, it would be?
Yeah, it is, yeah, it is laid out in the same way, in the, if you wanted to scroll down to like, yeah, so you can see, there's three years of numbers there, so people don't have to kind of compare one document to the other, they can just go to those sections.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn it over to Carson to share the good news item.
I've been working with Miriam Adasham, Kaying, so close, and the district equity and access leadership team dealt to come up with a all-encompassing culminating event for the month of March, for March 9th. We have encouraged and asked for the participation of all the schools to share the projects, reflections, and feelings that the students have come up with during Black History Month, and it has been a great way for us to encourage people to continue and not to conclude the expanding dialogues and conversations that are happening in the classrooms during Black History Month. And we also will invite, there will be a portion of the night that is going to be onstage at the HS in the auditorium, where we'll have some amazing performances. The Social Justice Union is also planning to be there. I think they're going to hold a panel, which will be really great to open up community discussion. There will also be some tabling throughout the high school, so it'll be a really open and inviting platform to connect with the community and share, share the work that the students have done.
Thank you.
Wanted to take the opportunity to just share with the board and the public who were in tension in terms of, we did recognize Black History Month from the district perspective and the board perspective. We had a banner on our website, we had a communication that was sent out in terms of equating our values with the month, and we wanted to put on an was sent out in terms of equating our values with the month. And we wanted to put on an event that is not an event, it's the beginning of a process. That's why we kind of put it into march and engage all our schools in looking at the work that they do in towards moving towards an inclusive curriculum. Of course, we hope someday, we don't have a Black History Month, that it's integrated into the curriculum. So that's the ultimate goal to move forward. And we've had some really good success this month. And I'll share with you, I'm wearing the cultural dress today. And this is from Ghana. This is called Mubarak, and you may know it as a dashiki, what they say in America, right? And so we've had some really good conversations around histories, whose histories, and how does it integrate into our, into our American history, and talking about the past, the present, but also looking at the future. Because I think that's important for us to look at where we're going as a country and a society in terms of moving forward. So hopefully, this is an opportunity for us to continue the dialogue. You saw the students here having the conversations. And I hope this becomes an annual event for us that sort of reminds us that we're still working on the work. So all of you will be invited or are invited, and we hope to see you there if you can make it. And look forward to having some fun.
Is that something that we can get, that PDF?
Definitely.
Yeah.
I just want to invite Board decorum. If you want to speak, just raise your hand. Commissioner Curry. Go ahead. Want to restate what you asked.
Can we get that?
Definitely.
So are you asking for that to be emailed to all of us?
I don't know. I mean,
We'll send you an invite.
How are you gonna publicize it?
Yeah, we're gonna publicize it through our communications. And each board member will get an invite with the flyer so you can share it with your friends and colleagues and anyone who's interested in attending. It's a free event. Very student-centered in terms of we have students sort of doing a lot of the presentations and giving information and also have community partners who are going to play a role in this as well, too.
Is there another comment? No. Great. Thank you very much for excellent report and your staff for an excellent report. Thank you. So we will move on to the consent agenda. One moment. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for a discussion? Commissioner Olwell?
Yes, I would like to have the January 23rd special board meeting minutes pulled from the consent agenda. I don't think they reflect.
Discuss them later.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Anything else?
So that I can get, also you just say we're gonna, we'll address that next so then we can, you move the consent agenda with everything except item G.
Okay. So we'll remove item G from the consent agenda and we'll discuss that next. Commissioner Olwell will make her comments at that time. And so I will move that we approve the consent agenda, items A, B, C, D, E, F, H, and I.
And J.
And J. Sorry, I didn't see.
I think I printed a little too soon.
Okay. Do I need a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Harrington. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. So returning to item G, Commissioner Olwell.
Yes. I don't think that it reflects what I said in it correctly. And I also don't think it reflects the end of the meeting correctly. So I would hope I could sit down with Commissioner Curry and rewrite the minutes on that section or at least put in what I think I said.
Thank you. So what will happen is that Commissioner Curry will communicate with Commissioner Olwell, make changes to the minutes, and it will be on the next board agenda. Commissioner Curry?
So just so everyone knows, the protocol, if anyone has a problem with the minutes, is just to send an email to Carson and copy me and just say what you, you know, say what you meant to say.
Okay.
It should just be really simple. It should just be like, you know, just document what you want. Just document.
Superintendent?
Just for information that all our board meetings are recorded. So people could go back and look at it.
Look at the video.
If you wanted to look at exactly what you said and then send it to Carson, if there was ever an opportunity that you wanted to correct the record, right? So it is documented by video, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Harrington?
Just a question on that protocol, Commissioner Curry. We only see some of these minutes once they go up, when they're posted on the agenda.
No, they're on the website per open meeting law, per public records law. They're on the website five days after the meeting as a draft. The draft does not get corrected. That is not the record. The draft is just to comply with the law. That's everybody's opportunity to read them. Commissioner Wick has taken advantage of that opportunity. And then you can email Carson, you can email me, you can email anybody and say what you forget should say. And then for the final, when it's on the consent, that would be another opportunity to pull them off the consent and say, that doesn't reflect my comments. And then just document what you believe would reflect it.
Commissioner Harrington?
So if we, I said, oh, that's not quite right. I think I said this. You would amend or you and Carson would change the draft before it got posted to the?
Agenda.
To the agenda.
You mean within the five-day drift?
Yeah.
Yeah. At that time, the minutes are open for anybody to review.
Okay.
From the public, from the board.
Great. Thank you. Moving on to the next item, board monitoring of superintendent-prepared reports and in particular, 2.5 asset protection.
Thank you, Chair Seguino. You have received the asset protection report. I'm not going to read it over to you, but there are, I did receive a question about, what was it? Number one, section seven, I think it was?
I think four. Yes, a question around, question four. And the questionnaire asked about a process around volunteers and what was currently happening. And so first of all, I want to just to let the board know that we did not have any sort of liability with volunteers last year. So that's, this report supports that. We did have, we did have policies, what was the name of it? Policy D6R, which was the volunteer and work-study students policy that we previously had, the old, the 144 policies we had. Those have been archived. We're currently using them as guidelines. And we're developing procedures and also identifying what are mandated policies. There is a mandated policy. So eventually, you'll see on the board website, you'll see the policy governance. Then you'll see the mandated policy, state and federal. And then we'll have our administrative procedures. So many of the old policies will end up being operational procedures for things that we do. But in particular, the question around the volunteerism, there is, we have no liability. We're still following the guidance of the former policy, which is to have all volunteers do a record criminal check. Doing that, the procedure we're currently working on is actually going to have some nuance to it because some of the, some of the challenges we have is around, one is cost for volunteers to pay for the cost. So we have to reconcile that and decide if we want to pay the volunteers for that cost. There's also different levels of records checks that we could do depending on the type of volunteers and which would mean reduce costs as well, too. So we're looking at having some nuance to it. So then if someone is just sort of going on a field trip, it's supervised by, as opposed to someone who's doing something that has to, you know, sort of supervise students, there's a different level of threshold. So you'll see that once we've had that completed. But during, in the duration, we're still following the guidelines from the former policy. So I hope that gives you enough information on that question that was asked around the volunteerism and opened up for any other questions around this particular monitoring policy.
What I'd like to do is, I'd like to invite a motion that the board finds the superintendent in compliance with this policy. This is, again, sort of operating within Robert's rules to have a motion on the floor as a context for discussion. Could I get such a motion?
I move.
Commissioner McLaren?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harrington. Any questions or discussion with regard to the superintendent's report? It's a quiet group tonight.
Can I just follow up on that last question? Because it did, it did surface out of our PTO meeting. Do we plan on publishing those? I know we have a certain number of state-required policies that don't fit neatly into our policy governance model. Will we publish the procedures on the website in the same way we used to with the state mandate?
Yes, we will. One of the things we're working on with our technology change over, we plan to eventually have an intranet for our staff. So there are procedures that are really staff-specific.
Right.
And then we're gonna, we're gonna capture some of the procedures that really are for the community.
Right.
That they'll be able to see right on the website, you know? So things like volunteerism and parent protocols when they have questions.
Yeah.
So it will be. We just haven't got there yet, but we have to go through that process. And it'll be on the, on the website so you can access it.
Great, yeah. Because there is some parent interest, I think, in that particular policy.
Thank you.
Former policy.
Seeing no more discussion, I'd like to invite a vote on the motion. All those in favor and would Commissioner Harrington, I'm sorry, Commissioner McLaren like to repeat the motion?
I move that we find the superintendent in compliance with policy title 2.5 asset protection.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. Moving on to the next item, board monitoring on its own policies. I'm going to turn this over to Commissioner Harrington.
If we look in your folder, courtesy of Carson, courtesy, language of policy 3.2 on accountability of the superintendent. And actually, the latest version of Robert's Rules of Order does have a section on small boards with up to about 12 people that does permit for the discussion of an item absent a motion on the floor. So I would suggest we should discuss and let the motion emerge because that seems better suited for an item such as this. But this policy on accountability of the superintendent is, well, you can read the words of it. Carson, maybe you could project policy 3.2 so people in the audience can see the policy while we're discussing it. It's about the superintendent as the board's link to operational achievement and conduct. And it's got three components to it. And you can see we were, you know, largely seven or eight of us agreeing on each of the three items. 9.1% is one person. So the green things, the green slices are, are one. And again, Michael Hilli always says, the question with monitoring is, is this working well enough for us? And so we seem to think mostly or fully on the middle part.
Commissioner Harrington, would you read the three items?
Yes. So first item, first, so the policy in general, as I said, is about the superintendent being the board's link to operational achievement and conduct. So the three parts, one, the board will never give instructions to persons who report directly or indirectly to the superintendent. You can see it's split out eight, two, and one there on being mostly in compliance. Two said fully, one said they don't know. Secondly, the board will not evaluate either formally or informally any staff other than the superintendent. Again, we have one person who said they don't know if we're in compliance with that policy. Seven people said we were fully in compliance. And then finally, thirdly, that the board will view successful superintendent performance as demonstrated by accomplishment of the ends and avoidance of the prescribed means that are in our executive limitations policies.
Commissioner Harrington, do we vote on this?
Yes, we need to, we do need a motion to emerge that we think we are in compliance or mostly in compliance. And again, if we are, I think the question, if we are mostly in compliance and we think we're mostly in compliance because of some good reason and we just need to continue on the road we're on, and we'll get fully in compliance doing what we're doing. I mean, this is a year where for part of the year, we were not using these policies. We've switched, you know, we were in transition. You know, I think as we monitor our own policies, the question always is, do, what do we need to be doing better? What, if anything, should we be doing differently with regard to the, the board-superintendent relationship as outlined here?
Would you make a motion?
Yeah. So, well, I'll move that we're mostly in compliance.
Point of clarification, are we going to have discussion after?
After the motion.
Commissioner Harrington had indicated we'd be discussing without a motion.
Well, I proposed that, but you are the chair.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I was confused.
So Commissioner Harrington has made a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Barlow, discussion. Mr. Curry?
So I'm curious, I continue to be curious about the, the best way to think about these questions because if I think about them as I can only respond for myself, like I have no idea if other people are giving direction to staff, right? So similarly, I have no idea if other people are informally evaluating staff or even what that means. Like, how would you, like, it just mean you talk about staff to, at willy-nilly? Is that informal evaluation? So I think the, the mostly versus full is, for me, a lack of understanding about what's being asked, how to think about it. It just feels a bit limiting to me, like, that we answer these questions without discussing the questions first. Like, like if I look at the board will view, view successful superintendent performance as demonstrated by accomplishment of board-stated ends, that's, it's very technical and very wonky to me. So I don't even understand 3.3 fully, 3.23. I think I do, but I don't really know because it's so new. So I feel like this process of getting this survey first and then throwing up an answer, I just end up kind of going mostly all the time because I'm like, well, I do that, I do that. Well, I don't even know what that means. So it just seems, I'm not sure the value is returning an ROI to us.
Commissioner Curry, did you want to make a suggestion for change?
Not at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Barlow?
I would like to make a suggestion for change at this time.
Good.
It seems to me like maybe we're doing this just a little bit out of sequence. And what we ought to do is be talking about the policy that we're going to be surveyed on at a meeting and then get a survey prior to the next meeting and then we can vote on it. So we just like, just phase it a little differently. And I think we would maybe get the result that Commissioner Curry was suggesting, a better understanding of some of these things. Because we could discuss as a group what we are interpreting, the various pieces of policy to mean.
So to concretize that would suggest then that on the agenda, we would have in advance the board monitoring policy a month in advance, have some discussion and clarity about what its intent was, so that when people do fill out the survey for the following month, they understand it. Does that make sense? Is that what you were suggesting?
Yeah, but more than understanding it, I think, it's a matter of being able to have the discussion to say to the superintendent, are people reaching out to your staff and, and giving them direction without, you know, going through the superintendent? So we'd be able to get the data we need in order to say fully or mostly or not in.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Porter and then Commissioner Kleeman.
So I agree with Mark and I agree with him because we're about to have new school board members who never went through the whole policy governance creation that we did, right? I knew precisely what each one of these were, right? And to me, on 323, that is the essence of policy governance, was on 323. And I picked up on that right away. As soon as I saw means and ends, I knew exactly where that was going, right? But somebody who hasn't been through our policy governance, which is, you know, any new board member should have the packet and said, this is how we do things for the most part. They, so I, I agree with Mark that it's actually, the prior month before, maybe as one of the closing agenda items, should be, this is what you're going to get a poll on and this is is the reasoning, maybe just a short clip on this is the reasoning behind it.
Thank you. Commissioner Kleeman.
Oh, I just wanted to say that, yeah, I didn't, I understood what was being asked. And the way I handled that ambiguity about, well, I don't know what other people are doing, is I just went with my perception of climate, and I think that's what's valuable about this. It's not supposed to, it's supposed to give us something to discuss, I would say. And I can tell you why I said mostly, if, when that comes up, or when that's time, so...
Thank you. Commissioner Harrington.
We decided on this survey approach because at our June retreat, Michael Healy had us practice two different approaches to monitoring, and the sense of the group at the time in June was that this was kind of a thing we wanted to try. But as he presented this to us, this poll was not just positive in any way, it was simply a way to see, is there one piece of the policy where perhaps we're all over the map or whatever? I mean, I think this is the moment to talk about what, like, in this model that Michael Healy suggested, this is the time to talk about, well, is anyone else giving direction to the superintendent, or what does this thing mean? Like, we can just have that conversation now. I mean, maybe we don't want to do the surveys before, but like, there's nothing preventing us from having the conversation you guys want to be having right this very minute.
I apologize, I'm coming down with something. The, that said, I think that having an advance notice about what the survey will be, the survey will be more meaningful if we have some advanced discussion of it. And just as a note, my responses were to observations that there were some people giving instructions to staff rather than the superintendent. And so, for some of us at least, it's been our experience. Commissioner Curry.
Yeah, so, I, what I, what I want to say is that what I'm hearing, or what, and my experience is, we have never actually had a conversation about how to do this. So, Susan Murray, Commissioner Harrington, you have taken on a very big piece of this work and tried to guide us through it amidst kind of the heavy business that we've had to contend with on all the agendas. And so, this piece is, I think, Winuski told us, and Essex told us, this is the piece that will be really hard, because I have to say, like, at last month's meeting, I would not have been able to stay to have a conversation about the board monitoring policy that's coming to us, because it was like 10:30 or something, everybody was like all done. So, I'm, so I appreciate the effort to try and include this, and I feel like it's important. And tonight, being 8:30, may, there may have been time to like have that discussion, but I didn't really know, like, we haven't had a discussion about our intention with this piece and how we want to structure it. So, I like the idea of everybody coming to the meeting and discussing it and then just doing live voting. Live voting was another method that Michael offered us, like, you just sit there and Google and vote after the discussion. That's another method that I think I would prefer. Having said that, you know, tonight feels like there would be time to do that. Last month, there wouldn't have been, so I don't know how you manage that in our district. I think in Winuski and Essex, things are a lot simpler.
Thank you. I'm going to, Superintendent.
Just a quick comment or reflection for the board. One, the, we know that this is a process, right? And each board kind of finds their way in terms of, you know, getting to the right balance. And it's new, I would say it's new for the entire board, because we haven't worked on this, so you're trying to find what's the happy medium. And one of the pieces I heard around is really getting consensus around if everyone's consistently answering the right question, because it sounds like people are reading the question and maybe interpreting it different, so there's some opportunities for that. Also, I'd say even the other boards you mentioned that are in, like, Winuski's on a two-year cycle. They don't do an annual. So, they, they were very thoughtful in terms, when they started out, they just did a couple each year, then they eventually got on a two-year, because they knew it would take time. So, we've been sort of been aggressive in trying to do this annual, and we do one or two every month, right? So, there's less time for the conversations to get to a happy medium in terms of this is where we want to, we want to get to. So, just some thoughts to think about. I know that some of the things we've talked about is having more retreat conversations around, okay, how do we make this better? And it's all about finding time, right? And I think at the summertime, is an opportunity also to reflect on, okay, the next calendar, how do we want to do this and how is it better in terms of doing that? So, those are just some pieces that, you know, I noticed in terms of the conversations.
Thank you. So, what I'd like to suggest is, first of all, that we try Commissioner Barlow's suggestion, which is that on our next agenda, we discuss whatever monitoring, board monitoring report will be coming the next month, so we feel prepared for it. I'm just going to ask everybody to keep your hands down until I'm done talking, if you wouldn't mind. And I also want to invite commissioners to email Commissioner Harrington and to take into consideration this conversation and to bring back a proposal for modification. Commissioner Porter.
I'd ask, I'd like to amend that a little bit, to ask Commissioner Harrington to go ahead and, within five days from tonight, let us know what is going to be voted on for next month, so we have kind of a preview of it and allows for questions, at least through email, so just like that.
Commissioner Harrington.
I would actually suggest a slightly different approach. Commissioner Seguino, that's a little bit more of a blend of what the last two comments were. I, my observation is that these pre-surveys have not served the function we thought they would in June, like, they are not helping direct our attention to the, like, they're not helping us say, oh, we seem to be fine here, but here's a place where there's questions, let's use our discussion. And somehow, the people's uncertainty about whether they filled out the survey right is, then takes up our discussion. So, I think we should simply discuss the policies, particularly with the March to April proposal, that might work on other meetings, but there, the work plan that we approved does not have any policy monitoring in April, because it's the board reorganization meeting, and that seems like a spectacularly bad month in which you have a board where they're reorganizing. That does not seem like, the first meeting of what will be a new board does not seem like a good time to monitor policies. And so, we have policies, I think, two, two policies on the calendar for March. So, I think we might do better simply planning to show up and discuss, and that way we can discuss what, you know, discern what we, are we interpreting these similarly? And are we, do we have any concerns about board behavior based on what interpretation of the policy emerges? I think that would keep us more true to the work that needs doing.
So, I'm thinking, I'm just trying to think about how to kind of coalesce this conversation. So, the point is well-taken that in April, there aren't any monitoring reports, and so the idea of putting something on the agenda next month to talk about in April doesn't work. Commissioner Porter's suggestion of alerting the board in a few days as to what would be the monitoring report in March, Commissioner Harrington?
You could look at the work calendar right now and see it, but yes, I can send an email out, yes.
Well, what I want to, I want to actually, what I'd like to propose is that you provide some additional context and language, so that board members have just a broader sense of what the issues are. The survey arrives, and for many, it may just lack sufficient context. And I would just invite consideration of the discussion here and to think at the next meeting about how we might modify this process based on that and the advance notice. Commissioner Wick.
Chair Seguino, thank you. I have a question that maybe Attorney McNeil can answer, or maybe you know the answer. I thought I read that the organization meeting in April is the first Monday in April, and therefore, I thought that we'd still have a regular board meeting the second Tuesday in April. And I don't know if you know the answer, or if maybe Joe, having 40 years of experience doing this, could tell us.
I'm going to defer to Commissioner Curry, who's the person who will be running that meeting in any case. Commissioner Curry?
So, I think it's optional, it's not traditional. The city charter provides for the organizational meeting and that's all.
In the first week.
In the first week, but then we certainly can keep a regular meeting scheduled.
So, just so I understand.
So, like, the city council meets the rest of the month, so we can, too.
So, the organizational meeting is supposed to happen, is it true, in the first week of April?
Right.
Because terms begin April 2nd.
The first Tuesday.
Oh, is it the first Tuesday or the first Monday?
First Tuesday.
Thank you.
First Tuesday for the board.
Got it. So, we could have a regular meeting the following week if we needed to.
Right, right. And a lot of times, the boards didn't used to do that, but...
I'm not saying we should.
Yeah, it's certainly...
All right, thanks.
We did not vote on this.
All right, there's a, Commissioner McLaren.
Well, I was just wondering if we're going to talk about this, are we going to vote on something now?
Yeah, so we'll be voting on this motion.
Okay. Well, so, just in reference to this specific question, the way I read the answers, or the policy is, was sort of in the context of our other policy that says the board's only authority is to give direction to the superintendent. And so, when I read, "The board will never give instructions to persons who report directly or indirectly to superintendent," I read that specifically to mean actual direction, action by the board, not individual board members. And so, that was my context for answering these questions.
I'm hoping my voice holds out. So, we have a motion on the floor, and would you mind repeating the motion, Commissioner Harrington?
Was it mostly in compliance?
Go ahead.
That was the motion, that we are mostly in compliance with Policy 3.2.
Great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. The last item on the agenda is meeting evaluation and follow-up, and what I'd like to do is to propose that we reflect on the quality of the discussion, whether we had sufficient time, and I'm going to simply go around the room and ask board members if they have any reflections on the quality of the meeting. I'm going to start with you, Commissioner McLaren.
I, I'll just say that I'm enjoying getting back to sort of regular order board meetings, where we can, we're focusing on some of the ongoing work of the district and not, and not continuing our budget conversations that took up a lot of time. So, I enjoyed that aspect of the meeting and certainly enjoyed the public engagement today.
Commissioners aren't required to speak, but we will just go around the table. Commissioner Porter?
Most of them.
Commissioner Kleeman?
I thought it was very, I, I've never seen happier students at a board meeting. That was brilliant. And I think I would have liked to discuss the, that thing, the compliance stuff, a little bit, but it's not that big of a deal, because I think we are mostly in compliance. But it was a lovely meeting.
I'm fine with the moving chair.
I've got a lot of thoughts in my head on the monitoring, but I will send them around later.
Commissioner Curry?
I thought it was an exceptional meeting and really exciting to have all the student activism that we have and to achieve what we achieved. And I thought it was probably the best meeting since I've been on board, for that reason.
Commissioner Barlow?
I, too, enjoyed, all right, I was, I admired the student engagement, I guess, I'll simply put it that way. But one of the things that I continue to be, I find very valuable is, are the reports from the superintendent and his staff. The ones we've had in the more recent meetings have been really informative, and I invite more of that, because I think that they, they help us do our work.
Commissioner Wick?
Sure, I'll echo that about the reports from staff and the super, and also how meaningful the BLM resolution to raise the flag here was. That was a special moment, and to see the, just the absolute joy when, when the kids succeeded was wonderful.
Commissioner West?
I just think it was great to see so many of my peers and other students out here getting involved.
And just adding on to that, I hope that that will continue, and that's a trend that continues, because I feel like, especially my freshman and sophomore year, there's like, I came to the board meeting like once, I think, and like, I, just, it didn't seem like something that the students were really involved in besides the board reps, so I hope that that trend continues as we move forward.
Thank you. I want to just add a comment that, as many of you know, there's a tremendous amount of work that goes into getting ready for this board meeting, including preparing the resolutions and the motions, certainly the work that the superintendent has done and so forth. And I want to thank all of the board members who have done this work and helped us be prepared to have a productive meeting. Thank you. So, the last item on the agenda here before the executive session is a future agenda, agenda items, future agenda item suggestions. The science presentation?
I, I would like to see us have a discussion as to content of board meetings. We're running out of time, so we have to, my feeling is that we need to have a discussion as to what assists us to make decisions and what is, 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 you know, for the good feel of the schools, right? Which has a value, right? But I don't, that's just the content and what we should be having.
Okay. I'll follow up with you further to see if we can kind of define that carefully. Commissioner Barlow?
I'd like to explore the flexible pathways discussion further. I was honestly quite troubled by the comment that Principal Rastakot made about pay-to-play being somehow, she, or having opportunities that might be available to some students raise an equity issue about what might be available to others. And I think that communities have different resources to bring to bear for their, for their public education systems, and that's just, sounds like a really dangerous sort of statement. So, I'd like to explore the whole flexible pathways further.
Thank you. Commissioner Curry?
I think that the board needs to get back to more solid metrics for the strategic plan and dive into fleshing that out to guide us, because I think we get off track without a more structured strategic plan.
Thank you. No, seeing no other suggestions, I want to move on to the last item, and in particular, I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session under the authority of 1 VSA 313A1F to consult with Board Council concerning the legal opinion delivered to the board on January 29, 2018 regarding board meeting protocols under applicable board policy and Robert's Rules of Order. Is there a second? I'm sorry, Commissioner Olwell. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. Thank you for all of our visitors here tonight. Thank you to our student reps, and we will convene in executive session down the hall.